Mr. Mayor, it's now 6:30. Are we ready to begin?
We are ready to begin.
Recording in progress.
Thank you very much, and good evening and welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Petaluma City Council and Petaluma Community Development Successor Agency for Monday, October 20th, 2025. If you wish to provide a comment tonight on tonight's agenda, please fill out a speaker card, and there with our clerk here at the front of the room. And please note, due to construction we've done, our clerk is now on my right as opposed to being on my left. So there's our clerk. Card's back there. Bring it to clerk. Thank you very much. And I'd like to now invite Monica Paricio and Maria Galvez to provide information to those who wish to participate in Spanish tonight.
Thank you and good evening. Buenas noches. Me llamo Maria Galvez y estoy aquí con mi pareja de interpretación, Monica Paricio. Estamos hoy aquí como intérpretes. Este evento se llevará a cabo en español e inglés. Se usarán ambos idiomas activamente, así que usted podrá elegir un canal para participar en su idioma preferido después de que le hayamos explicado cómo funciona la interpretación. Estaremos usando la función de interpretación de Zoom. Después de que termine esta explicación, se activará la función de interpretación. Si usted está conectado con su computadora, verá un icono de un mundo en la parte inferior de su pantalla. Si está conectado con su tableta o teléfono, pulse en más y verá un menú que incluye la opción de interpretación de idiomas. Para escuchar la interpretación, pulse el icono del mundo o interpretación de idiomas. A continuación, elija su canal de idioma. Thank you, and we are ready.
Thank you very much. May we have a roll call for the evening, please?
Barnacle?
Present.
Cater Thompson?
Here.
DeCarly?
Here.
Now?
Here.
Quint?
Here.
Shribs?
Here.
McDonald?
Here.
And we do have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Let's all rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we have a moment of silence. And in this moment, from time to time, the council gives us this opportunity to honor a member of the Petaluma community who's contributed to the fabric of Petaluma through their efforts and their life, and has recently passed. Tonight, we'll be closing the council meeting in honor of Sean McCoy, stalwart of the Petaluma Speedway and member of local agriculture family, who passed away on Saturday. He was part of the Petaluma Speedway family, deeply interwoven through generations of McCoys, who made the Speedway a signature Petaluma event. And now with his loss, Sean McCoy's name is etched in the Petaluma Speedway racing history. Our thoughts and prayers go out to his wife and the entire McCoy family at this time. We'll be closing the meeting in Sean's honor. At this point, I'd like to look up and down the dais and see if any of the council members wishes to change any of the agenda that we have in front of us today. And seeing none, we will adopt the agenda as it is presented. And that brings us to our LUMA GO presentation. So I'd like to invite Jared Hall, our transit manager, to the podium to help us with this topic. And while Jared is setting up and getting ready here, I'd like to provide a little structure to how the conversation will go this evening. Staff will make a presentation about LUMA GO, and council will have an opportunity to ask a few questions. We'll move into general public comment, and if we have questions or comments from the public on the LUMA GO program, that would be the appropriate time to weigh in with those questions. Thank you. Mr. Hall, how are we doing?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Just a minute while I bring this presentation up. So good evening again, members of the council and members of the community. We're really excited to come before you tonight to give an update on our LUMA GO one-year pilot program. So there's several sections to our presentation discussion tonight. We're, of course, going to look backwards over the start of the LUMA GO service a little over a year ago and how the service was conceived. We're going to give an overview of how the service is run during its pilot period, look at some of the ridership data that we've had, and then look towards the future a bit of things we have on the queue for improvements with the service, and then kind of the ongoing future, what the service looks like.
Jared, can I stop you for one second?
Yeah.
Sorry. Do you mind just flipping to, if you go to display settings and flip it away from presenter view? That way the full screen can be, yeah, or Caitlin can share. Thank you.
All right, next slide. So in terms of some of the history of LUMA GO, it was something that was identified in the FY24 council goals, and we wanted to create a new innovative type transit service that would bring more people into the Petaluma Transit Network, especially people who had never rode transit before. And so with that, we wanted to create a really holistic, brand-new, Petaluma-specific type service, and we set out planning the service in June of 2023. Next slide. So in terms of how we're outlining what LUMA GO was going to look like, what we did is we created an ad hoc group of the community, and that was comprised of seven members of both the Transit Advisory Committee, other residents from Petaluma, and then other stakeholders representing different groups from throughout Petaluma. That group was formed in July 2023. And from that group, we held a half dozen meetings designed at framing what LUMA GO was going to look like. And you can see some of those goals here on the screen. And so those included things like getting new riders into the Petaluma Transit Network, providing access to additional places throughout Petaluma, including low-income and senior housing population areas, serving increased higher-density housing, complementing existing Petaluma Transit routes and services versus having something that's going to compete with them. And then, of course, we wanted to decrease downtown traffic and congestion, one of the goals we have in terms of meeting the overall city climate goals. Next slide. So with that, we created a pilot program, next slide, that was uniquely branded and Petaluma-specific. And so what you can see on the screen there is some of the different t-shirts that we add, the bags. I'm sure people have seen them from throughout the community. We wanted the bus to be bright and vibrant, not overly so, but the right amount that it stands out and people know what it is, and they say, there goes LUMA GO. And so we add a unique name to it. We add a unique look and logo. We add a white-label app that was specific just to LUMA GO. And we did a large amount of marketing and outreach. We did over a dozen community events, and we modified the, we did those events working with groups like McDowell Family School, the Women's Club, Blue Zone, Pep Housing. And we also wanted to integrate where those services were already. So that means going to places like the Petaluma Fair, the Craft Beer Festival, and Butter and Eggs. And those have had really great success and great adoption from the community. And then one of the things we wanted to do is modify the service, recognizing that we're trying to get a new type of rider. We extended hours on Friday and Saturday to run until 10:00 PM to try to catch the dinner crowd with the service. Next slide. So in terms of what the service looks like, you can see the overview map there on your screen. We intentionally wanted to design it to be roughly about four square miles in size. And the reason why is you want a service that will come fairly often. So we didn't want people to wait more than 15 minutes. We didn't want them to have to be on the vehicle for more than 10 to 15 minutes before it gets them to their destination, because we wanted people to have a good experience with this, knowing that it's the first such pilot and what may become a future service for the city. And we started off with one vehicle running at all times. You can see the hours there on the screen in the middle of the slide. But pretty quickly, we transitioned over to two vehicles during peak times, just based on demand, and we did that about three months in. And so that second vehicle started running from 1:00 PM to 6:00 PM on weekdays. And in that map, you can see some of the major destinations that you would expect in the service area, things like the Petaluma Community Center, the Fairgrounds and Target Shopping Center, the Smart Train, and of course downtown. Next slide. So these are some of the great photos that you can see from our outreach events. Again, we received a warm welcome from the community, and we fortunately had good coverage from the newspaper as well, the Argus Courier. We had a couple of nice articles in there talking about the service, which further helped to promote it. Next slide. So in terms of ridership and utilization, we'll look at some of the data on the next slide. So you can see there on your screen some of the ridership stats that we had, and really it started increasing from day one of what that service looked like. So back in October 2024, we had about 43 rides per day. Zoom to closer to today, we had over 100 rides per day in July 2025. To date, we provided about 23,500 rides. Average pickup is about 17 minutes, so right near what our goal was initially. Of those 24,000 rides, it's worth noting that 3,500 are unique riders, meaning we have a lot of people out there in the community who have taken LUMA GO multiple times, which is always great to see. Our daily record, I think we've actually beat this a time or two since then, was 165 riders in May. Half the trips, over a half, were shared trips. And then one of the things we're really proud of is the customer service rating. Every time you take a LUMA GO and asked how your experience was, and we've gotten a 4.9 out of 5 with our ratings we've gotten through that app so far. Next slide. So in terms of some of the data, you can see some of the different metrics there that we're looking at when we're considering the service. So on the left side, you'll see the number of rider requests. In the middle, the number of completed rides. And on the right, the boardings or productivity of the service, how many people per hour getting riding it. And what's notable is each of those have risen over the course of the pilot period. And with this type of service, really 6.2 boardings per hour is pretty successful for a microtransit service. Our vendors been really impressed with how soon we've gotten to that level. So really, pretty quickly, it was able to take off and start gaining momentum. Next slide. So a lot of the question we get asked is where are these trips going to and from? And it's worth noting that you can scan that QR code on your screen if you wanted to see this map in a bigger picture. But the dots on the map represent the different areas where people have been going to and from. The bigger the dot and the brighter represents more trips. And so it's a lot of the most common destinations that you'd expect in this part of Petaluma. So it's things like the Target Shopping Center, the fairgrounds, especially during major events, the library, Smart Station Downtown, even some residential areas have been major ones within that zone as well. And then some of the schools in Petaluma are pretty close to the service owner within it, including Petaluma High School, where we've seen a number of riders as well. Next slide. And the numbers only tell a portion of the story with LUMA GO. A lot of it's really about the experience that people are having and the impact it has on their lives. And for a lot of people, we've really heard how transformative it can be for them. They may not have other transportation options, even with transit, for whatever reason, the other services may not meet their needs specifically. So a lot of the trips that we've been providing are really vital for people. They may be going to medical appointments. They may not have other means to get outside the house. It may be their only way to see a friend or a family member. So really consequential impacts that we've heard in the comments from the community. Next slide. So in terms of what other findings we've had with LUMA GO thus far, it's a type of service to where, once you start on day one, it's never fully dialed in. There's always a bit of work that you have to do to get it to run just the way you want it. And this was no exception. So we did fine tuning of it over the first six months. That's minor things like adjusting the zone slightly. Does it pick you up on the west side of the street or the east side, modifying those type of things. Of course, education was a big piece of that. That's education with our staff, our drivers and dispatchers, with it being a new technology. And then it's also, of course, the public, letting them know about the name of the service, the app, even in many cases, doing outreach events, showing them how to book their first trip on the service. And in terms of the riders of it, we've really seen a broad demographic of riders. It ranges in age, race, income. So we think it's great representation of the community in terms of who's riding out there. Next slide. So in terms of the cost of the service, in FY25, there's a number of costs called out on here that you can see that are startup costs, things like initial design of the service, the logos. Of course, we did a fairly robust advertising promotion campaign, and then even things like wrapping the bus, those generally being one-time startup costs. The biggest costs you can see are the operation costs, things like the driver wages being a major one, fuels noted on there, even our software that the service operates on. And of course, this budget that you can see there wasn't for running for the entire fiscal year. It was only from October running through June, October through December being adjusted to one vehicle. Overall, for pure operations, the service costs $214,000. And when you add in all the total costs, the cost to operate in FY25 was $332,000. Next slide. So in terms of the transition to FY26, you can see the pure operating costs on the top, $331,000, and that increased for several reasons. One reason is the service ran for the entire calendar year as opposed to a portion of FY25. Another is we have the second vehicle running at peak time throughout the entire year. And then the third one being cost increase with our transit operation contract, FY25 being the last year of the old contract, FY26 being the first year of the new contract. So total cost to operate the service is $397,000. Generally, that would be kind of your ongoing baseline for the service, assuming you didn't add hours, days, things along those lines, that plus general cost inflation kind of going forward. Next slide. So you can see the analysis of the service there on the screen, and it's worth noting that the service, none of the service is currently coming from city general fund or from Measure U funds. This is all funded through a combination of the SCTCA grant, the Sonoma County Transportation Climate Authority, and then from TDA, Transportation Development Act Enterprise Funds. And so that's how the service has been funded so far. But you can see on your screen there the comparison from year one to year two. Next slide. So in terms of some upcoming improvements, next slide, we really want to take it to the next level and kind of maximize the integration of LUMA GO and our fixed route service. So whereas now, when you use the app, you're only seeing the LUMA GO service on there, with this next phase that we're currently working on, it would integrate the existing fixed route transit service and schedule. So if you're trying to book a trip and LUMA GO wasn't available, it would show you other routes like Route 2, Route 11, and give you that information so you could book that trip. So it becomes more of your one-stop shop on the app for all of your transit mobility needs. So we're hoping to launch that feature in about three months or so. Next slide. Another one we're excited about is what's called co-mingling, and this integrates paratransit with our microtransit service. Right now, it's generally, our paratransit vehicles have specific paratransit riders, microservice has microriders. This lets you do the best of both worlds and combine them when trips are in the same service area and at the same time. So what that does is it improves a few different things, and you can see examples here on your screen for a couple of pilot programs that have been launched elsewhere in places like Green Bay and Sioux area. And the benefits that they found by doing this, it improves customer service, it can reduce costs, especially in your paratransit service, and it even includes, improves things like OTP, your on-time performance. And so those are some of the benefits we're hoping to see as we launch this item in the first half of next year. Next slide. And you can see some of the benefits that other agencies have seen. We estimate that this may save about $10,000 to $20,000 per year of what we're using right now to operate the service. It's a little bit of an unknown, but we do think there will be cost savings there along with those other benefits. It's worth noting one case example here, and Sarasota, Florida is actually able to save several hundred thousand dollars. I wish that was the case for us, but probably not quite that much. But still, any cost savings is helpful along with those other benefits that we saw. Next slide. So this gives an overview of all those different items we're talking about launching. And then, of course, we're going to continue our ongoing marketing, our outreach, our partnerships. We want to continue to spread the word about the service throughout the community so people remember it and continue to use it. Next slide. So in terms of the future, next slide, another question that we commonly get is where do people want to see LUMA GO next and what's the demand out there? And I think this map really helps to outline where people are requesting the service to. Pretty much from day one, when people weren't in the zone, we've been hearing, hey, we want to be in the zone, please expand it, please add another one. And this map shows that. So all the different dots represent requests. The darker dots, especially the black ones, are multiple requests grouped in one area. And some of the major destinations that we've heard people want to go to are places like the New Petaluma North Smart Station, SRJC Campus, even Kaiser and Corey Heights, the residence there on the Boulevard. And one of the common things that we often hear from people, whether you're going from Midtown, East Petaluma, is they want to go downtown. That's kind of their most common destination. They want to go from home downtown to catch dinner, to see friends, whatever it is. And then things like expanded night service further into the evening, and then expanded weekend hours. Next slide. So similar with the people who have been riding it, a lot of the comments we've gotten from people who want the service but don't have it attest to how transformative it could be for their life. You can see some of the quotes here. You know, a lot of people would love to go to the New North Smart Station. SRJC has a lot of excitement about the thought of expanding the service. But overall, we think it would really improve the quality of lifestyle for people if they were in a LUMA GO service zone. Next slide. So the biggest obstacle, I would say, to expanding is the amount of resources needed to do so. Right now, we have a grant fund that is a three-year grant, although the clock is ticking on that. So we're about a year into that grant. And even to run the existing service with those funding sources, we have additional resources may be needed. One of the things worth noting with our two biggest funding sources, TDA and STA Enterprise Funds, we've seen a decrease in those funds pretty consistently for the past two years along with an increase in our costs for some of the reasons that we mentioned, inflation, the new operation contract, things along those lines. And so to continue the service, some amount of resources are needed. And then to expand the service, that's doubly the case. We estimate that if we were to add a second zone with a comparable amount of vehicles, service hours, et cetera, that would cost about $300,000 to $350,000 a year. There are some in-between steps, some hybrid options we're looking at, minor tweaks to the zone, slight fluctuations or expansions in the service hours, and those could be anywhere from $40,000 to $80,000 per year perhaps. But anything that requires a good-size expansion of the zone or a new one would add that higher cost, since the current zone is pretty close to capacity without expanding it and possibly negatively impacting those things like the trip times, the pickup times, et cetera. And of course, we're turning over every stone to try to keep the service running. So we've identified a couple of other grants we're looking at, a federal one and a state one. But it's worth noting, many of the grants are on the capital side. It's fairly difficult to get operating grants, which is sort of the pickle here. And then another option is, does the service continue whatsoever? We very much hope that it does. We think there's demand in the community. If we did have resources to run the service with another zone, you know, tomorrow, we think that the man in the community would be there to do so. But of course, and it is a question of resources largely, and what can be done on that side of things. Next slide. So in terms of the LUMA GO financial outlook, we're also looking at other options as well beyond looking at the grants and doing modifications. We were looking at the fairs on the service. Of course, every fair on Petaluma Transit's network is all free, whether that's fixed route or including LUMA GO. And you can get funding from that, but it's not a huge amount relative to the budget. For example, if we charge what had been our typical fare and we brought that back for LUMA GO specifically, that would bring in about $42,000 a year in revenue. $2.50 would bring in about $75,000. But basically, there's no amount of fare you could reasonably charge that would cover the full amount of these service costs. Next slide. So we brought this presentation discussion to our Transit Advisory Committee last month, and we wanted to hear what they had to say about it in the community in that forum. And so overall, people love the service. They love the branding. They love the look of it. They were enthusiastic when they had rode the service. They were concerned somewhat about busy times. It's not always guaranteed you do get a ride on there. That's one of the victims of the success of it. But overall, people would love to see the service extended if possible, especially to areas like East Side Petaluma and the Lakeville Corridor, Kaiser, as mentioned a few times. One technical thing, people would like to see a conditional denial message. If you're outside the zone, but within a half mile, right now, anyone outside, it says, can't provide the trip. We're trying to work with the provider to have a customized message. If you're then walking distance saying you're outside of the zone, but you can walk into the zone. So kind of a minor change there. We, of course, talked about the fairs, even more innovative funding models, like working more the business community, whatever that looks like in mechanism to help fund the service, and then looking at other city funds as well, non-transit enterprise. And then the big piece is what LUMA GO does overall and its role in the Petaluma Transit Network, how it integrates with fixed route, how it integrates overall throughout the city, and what the role be is. Next slide. So that brings us to tonight. We're having our presentation, our discussion here, and then we anticipate coming back before you potentially with a workshop, that should be prior to the FY27 budget. So that completes my presentation.
Thank you very much. Really glad to have you here and make this pitch. I know we're heading into tougher and tougher budget times, and so having the numbers we can think about before making decisions about is a real asset to us. And I know the public appeal is great. Everybody loves the idea. They just haven't all gotten out and taken a ride yet. And funny story, I bumped into the Sonoma County Superintendent of Schools who lives in Petaluma and said, well, have you ridden LUMA GO? And she said, no, not yet. She hadn't. And the next day, I got a photo, a selfie of her on LUMA GO, which we can use in your literature for ongoing. But with that, I want to ask the council if anyone has any questions on the presentation. Councilmember Shribs?
Sure. There's a couple. I asked a whole bunch of questions, and it's all in the notes, I guess, from the meeting. That's probably will be posted after that, all your answers for that, which is all really good. So the areas that I'd still like to go over for the public that is here is like looking at the future, what it might look like. It's really good. We have funding now. And then in the near future, we're good for another year, but what might it look like two or three years from now? So there's about four areas I'd like you to talk about a little bit. One is, I know my mom took paratransit when she was here in town for several years, and we spent, I think it was $2 or $3 on that per ride, and that worked really well for us. So a $2 to $3 ride from house to wherever it is and back. Hey, I said that's, I think that still would work, but I'd like to hear a little bit more about the pricing there. And then with the future of being that drivers are the highest cost to the whole system, that was like two-thirds of the whole cost was drivers. that was like two-thirds of the whole cost was drivers. And what's coming pretty soon in the large cities, because it's coming here probably within five years, I'm estimating, is some Robotox taxis type work. Is it possible for us to turn LumaGo and turn to the robo-taxi services and label them LumaGo and basically tie in with that service? And make that happen, at least locally for downtown, for a couple of spots? Maybe have little circuits that are being run by robo-taxis down the line here? Then another one would be if we could somehow figure out a way of tying LumaGo with the schedules of both the train and the buses, but particularly the train, so that there would be a pickup right at the train. When the train stops, people unload, people get on LumaGo, and then be deposited where they need to go for that last mile. Because I didn't quite hear that that was part of the scheduling that we would need. I think it would be a really good service there. And then you sort of mentioned a little bit about working with the business downtown. Could we set up for all the employees downtown, a park-and-ride situation, maybe with some of the shopping centers that have spaces? And have employees parked there, especially if there's on a schedule, if they're like 8 o'clock or 10 o'clock or 12 o'clock schedules? Could we set up a park-and-ride for employees, for businesses, and provide that as a service? And really clean up the parking downtown if we move the employee parking off downtown site and provide that as a free service? So those are the things that I'm kind of thinking about is what could we do over this next year or two to get ready for the future? So I thought I'd hear back from you. Hopefully, you wrote all those down.
Yeah, thank you. Hopefully, I got them. We'll find out. So the first one, I believe, was robo-taxis. And so I think that's something that will be very exciting in the future that we'll keep an eye on. I think it's a question of, it's a possibility, depending on how the technology comes along. We would have to have the right vehicle available, the right technology available. There are robo-taxi-type pilot programs going on throughout the Bay Area. I don't know if there's one that's currently taking the place of the transit service right now, but I think it's a matter of time. But what we can do is we'll be updating our short-range transit plan starting early next year, and we want to look at a variety of different things, some of which is what our network looks like, where our routes are going, and what's being served, and some of which is things technology-related such as this. So I think what we want to do is take the temperature of council, the community, to see where this type of item falls within that. And then from there, I think we can keep an eye out for things like grants, if it's a priority, doing this type of thing to really get it off the ground and do that type of integrative type program. One thing worth noting with it would be the labor side. So of course, our drivers, our operators right now are all wage staff, and they're unionized, so that would be a piece to consider down the road, but nothing that couldn't be overcome, but worth noting. In terms of the tie-in with train services, so one of the things we regularly try to do, especially in our fixed route service, is tie in our services together. For example, we want our buses to meet the Smart Train, so when you're arriving from one to the other, you have a quick turnaround with it. That's one of the things that we looked at as a priority with this service. And Smart, of course, is basically in the middle of the service zone. The piece that's balanced with that is for the vehicle to get to the train station before it arrives. It generally has to get there five minutes before. And then if you want it there when you get off the train, it would have to wait and be there about five minutes afterwards. You can do that, but with Petaluma, we're basically middle of the line on Smart, and our ridership is basically equidiscantly split, north and south, AM and PM. So it's always a bit of a balance, like with our Route 24 is saying, is it a priority to get you to Smart Train in the morning to take it out of Petaluma? Or is it to pick you up when you're coming into Petaluma to get you to your job and trying to balance that? I mention that because it can be there and be there waiting during those times. The trade-off is it's not doing other things within that zone, that vehicle. So you get the better connections to Smart, but it may not be quite as productive during that time as it could be otherwise. But that's something we are always trying to balance. And if any of our vehicles ever have a time when they don't have trips, their primary layover spot is actually near the downtown Smart Station, somewhat for that reason. And then the last one I recall is the downtown solution and integration of this, or the park-and-ride solution and the integration with this in it. I think that's a great idea as well. That was one of the thoughts with the fairgrounds. That would be a likely potential location for that, where people could park there when there's not major events going on, no conflicts, and take this type of service downtown. Of course, they have Route 11 that was already running, but this is yet another great service that could provide that connection. And I think any other such locations throughout the city, this could potentially be a solution for that as well. I think if there was ever a second LumaGo zone, for example, that serves Eastern Petaluma a bit more, one of the things we would really look at would be the Petaluma North Station. We've heard from the JC a lot that it would be really great to have a additional solution, whether that's fixed route or LumaGo, helping to provide that first and final mile. So I think there's a lot of potential for those types of things out there as well.
Thank you. The one question I didn't get to is on the comparing it to paratransit, because paratransit was also like a pickup at the house and take somewhere, drop, pick up and drop off, charged fee. So is LumaGo sort of transplanting paratransit right now, a large part of it? Or are they still working in uniform?
Very slightly, not to a large extent. We think it's largely a different ridership base. Paratransit, people have to apply to that service, and they have to be approved for having a medical condition that would prohibit them from riding the fixed route service. And so there's pros and cons with that service. Generally, you're booking that service at least 24 hours in advance, because the certainty is a huge selling point and necessary element of it. If you're taking that to something like a dialysis appointment, you need to make sure you're getting there in a finite time window. You need to be guaranteed, basically, that trip is going to come and get you to that medical appointment on time. With LumaGo, it's a bit more flexible. It's not always guaranteed it'll be at your house at a certain time. At busy times, you don't always get a trip when it's super busy. So when we hear from people in the community that has that type of need, we usually recommend they join paratransit service, take that to those type of trips. But then LumaGo is great if it's a more flexible type trip, a more spontaneous one you want to do throughout the day. So there's some overlap, and we've heard from people on both services how they have tried both. But I don't think it's a consequential percentage of it. It's a smaller piece.
Good. And then the one thing that LumaGo is not doing, and as a possibility thingy down the road, is over there at the either fairgrounds or at the train station, be setting up a microcar rideshare system, so that if we had, microcars being pretty small, the three and four can fit in the same space as a regular vehicle for folks that just need that last mile. Whether or not, at some point, is there, have you thought about that or how that might work in conjunction with it down the road here?
Yeah, we think it could be a compatible type of program. There's a lot of discussion and emphasis in the region of what's called mobility hubs. It's kind of like the concept of a park-and-ride evolved into the modern times and technology. So you'll have things like the parking features at a park-and-ride, but you have additional first and final mile connections, like even electric car charging, but things like bike share, scooters, or it could be microcars. And I think that's a type of technology that could be integrated more in those type of hubs, something that the city is looking at doing more going forward is creating those type of mobility hubs.
Right. I'm watching that happen over in France and other places right now, just being successful. Thank you. I'll pass it down.
Councilmember Quinn?
Sure. Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. You know, I'm a big fan of LumaGo. I appreciate it, and I think it's providing a great service. You know, I would like to sort of echo something that Mayor McDonald had sort of touched on, and Mr. Shribbs touched on it as well. So far, you know, my understanding is that really the majority of the funds for LumaGo have been made possible by the TDA fund, is really sort of the lion's share of it. And that fund is something that we've been able to take advantage of a carryover from year to year. And my concern is that as we approach the end of this fiscal year that we're in now, that, you know, those funds are going to not be as plentiful as they were. And we may find ourselves in a position where we have to make tough choices. And so I'm cheering this up front, just because I want, you know, my other, you know, my fellow council members to know that, you know, to temper excitement on this, because I think as the mayor pointed out, you know, we need, we really at that workshop that may come before us, we really need to understand the future financial outlook before we get excited about expanding. We may decide to expand it, but that may come at the cost of something else, and so that's a trade-off. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember DeCarle?
Hey, Jared. Thank you for the presentation. How many LumaGo buses do we have?
Right now, we have two, although, as you may recall, council recently approved the purchase of five new electric vans. So we're anticipating putting one to two of those on LumaGo service as well.
And I don't know if I missed it in there, but what is the average distance per trip?
I think Carly's online. She can help me look that up. I would say about two to four miles, but she can get me a more specific metric in a second.
Okay. And then also in there, when you talk about passenger trips being basically two passengers per trip, is a trip per booking or is a trip the average number of riders in between any stop?
A trip is one person going one direction, one leg of it. So if you're going from your house to your job, that's one leg, one trip, the second going back. Generally, we have about 2.2 people per trip on the vehicle. It's not a dedicated ride vehicle. You may be on there with another person doing another trip, so that's about 2.2 on there at any given time.
Do we have an indication as to how many people are on the bus at any given time?
Well, generally, that's a number. We have, as we mentioned in the presentation, it's about 6.2 boardings per hour, so that fluctuates throughout the day. When it's the slower times, you know, you may have one person on there, during the busier times, two or three. So it really kind of varies throughout the day with the demand curves. But on average, that's kind of what you would see as a 2.2 throughout the day.
Okay. And how many seats do we have on each bus?
Right now, 12. 12-seated, or up to three wheelchairs or a combination in between.
Okay. Do you know, on the regular bus system, the full-sized ones, how full are those on any given trip or between stops?
So it depends on the fixed route buses, which trips you're talking about. I would say about 10% of those trips may be running close to full capacity. There's ones that have less people on them, that may have four or five, if you're talking about the late evening. But if you're talking about our school tripper trips, like the 301, 302, you may have 50 kids on that bus, and it may be a full bus. So that kind of varies throughout the day, the different loads that you would see on that system accordingly. Generally, that service has about, I think our average is about 13 boardings per hour or so.
Okay. So I'd be interested in seeing a comparison between the two, just because, kind of as Councilman Quinn mentioned, that funding may become an issue, cuts may have to be made. If microtransit is, can be sufficient for the regular fixed route buses and take the place of those to help us, you know, basically replace larger buses that we maybe don't need, you know, that might be something we have to consider. So it would be nice at some point to see a comparison between the two. And then, you know, with the average number of riders per trip being two, you know, I almost wonder if microtransit is necessary in town. If, you know, we try to be such a bike-friendly city, and we're expanding the grid right now, bike routes, what if we did, you know, electric pedicab or something like that, you know, to get people around? And maybe that's a cheaper solution. But, you know, I just wonder if we can compare the two to actually see, you know, if one could replace the other or what's actually necessary versus just an additional subsidized service that we've got. And then, I mean, it does concern me too, and I'm sure we don't have a study on this, but, you know, there are private businesses out there, cabs or minivans, there's the guy that drives around at night with the disco music going and lights. You know, do we, are we hurting private business or people's ability to do that if they want to, you know, with something that's free? So should we, should we not be doing something like this and encouraging more of, you know, economic growth in that department versus using tax dollars for it?
Yeah, a couple of thoughts on that, really quick, in response to your first question. The average ride distance is two miles, so we looked up the data for that. With the latter question, that's something that we want to look into a bit more as well. We applied for a grant recently through the Sonoma County Transportation Climate Authority that would allow us to do a partnership program with what's called TNC, transportation network companies like Uber, Lyft, Taxi. And what that does is it helps to leverage those services, and the city may be able to help out by increasing access to those. It may be discounted trips during certain times or to different parts of the city. So that's the type of pilot program we're looking at, that if that gets off the ground, we think would be complementary with our network overall. Generally, what we found is those type of services, although they're a part of the transportation network, not something that the city really has control over, not something available all times of the day. It can be sort of a roll of the dice type of thing. But we would like to get such a program started in the future, and we think would be a good complement.
And then I took a look in the adopted budget, and it didn't break it down, but how much of this is funded by enterprise?
Give me a second to check on that figure, and I'll get that to you. That's fine.
I think the question was about enterprise. It all runs through the enterprise, and the enterprise has no general fund money in it?
Correct. It's all either enterprise or grants. It's just a question of the split of the two. No city general fund and no measure you.
Helping with this, right? Or is that through enterprise?
Sorry?
We have two grants helping to fund this, right? And do those go through enterprise?
One is a grant, and that's a competitive grant that's through SETCA. The other is transit-specific enterprise funds, the TDA funding.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Thank you. And though I love the service, it does not go to District 3. If you pull up the map, and you can see how many, can you pull up the map, please? Because you can see that there's been very, there's a bunch of little green dots of people that have wanted the service in District 3, that it does not service that area. And though it goes down MacDell and it turns on Caulfield to go over to Lakeville, so it goes right past the pep housing on Caulfield and MacDell. It goes right past St. Francis, which would be my corner, and so, and the Lucky Shopping Center there. So I was just, no, that's not the map. The map with the little dots, the little green dots. The ridership, the future service.
Requested service area.
See? Okay, so your bottom, well, the middle of my right, so your right-hand side, that area, that's in white, that's not in the green service area, but there's a lot of little green dots. And I think part of that is Councilmember Shribbs and Councilmember Quinn's districts as well. It does not service our district, so, but it does go through Caulfield, go down MacDell to Caulfield and around. And I've even, the driver must take lunch on Gumwood, because I've seen it in Gumwood. When I'm walking the dog, and I'm like, wait a minute, LumaGo doesn't even go. So it's frustrating for my neighbors, and that's, those little green dots are probably people I talked to and said, put in where you live, because maybe the future destinations will include our district and our neighbors. Because there's a lot of, like I said, pep housing, Little Woods is on Baywood, that it could go to Little Woods, and it goes to Lakeville, it goes down Caulfield. So it's not that hard to add it. And do we have a breakdown of the demographics between how many seniors, how many students, and in-between adults? You know, what is the demographics? Who uses it? I'm sure students do morning and afternoon, summer, all day. But seniors, I know, use it a lot. So do we have a breakdown of the demographics?
We don't have one right now. It's anecdotal, but we think it's a pretty good split. But we're hoping to do one over the next couple of months that would give us a bit more quantitative data on the demographic split of it.
And what are the hours that we run it right now? And was there a difference in the summertime hours?
Summertime hours are the same. You can see it on slide. Slide number seven has the hours. Monday through Thursday, 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Friday, 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. Saturday, 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. Sunday, 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m.
And that was all year? It wasn't just longer during the summer months?
Correct. The only time we ran a bit longer was during the Petaluma Fair and then during Lumice.
Okay. Okay. That was my other question. So I would like to see it expanded. I have tried to use it. I used it with the leadership class of the Chamber of Commerce. And we were at the boathouse or the float house and it got confused because we wanted to be picked up and taken to another location in Petaluma. And it got confused because we thought we were going to get picked up like before the Balshaw Bridge right there on Water Street. But it went right by. It didn't stop. We could see the little green, little green guy, little bus going around. And so anyway, we ended up going over to Golden Eagle Shopping Center and tried it again because we canceled that one. And then, so when you get those cancellations, do they show up in our statistics as a rider or no?
They show up as a ride attempted, but not a ride completed.
Okay.
So we can differentiate between the two. And anytime anyone does have that kind of experience, please reach out to let us know the date and time. We can look at the specifics and that really helps us dial it in and fine tune it.
Well, we just, you know, we were leaving the float house, but we did not realize we should be where we, where we, we should have used the app from the location instead of when you order an Uber, you order it from the location, the address. And we did, they just knew our location was on the river, but they didn't know where on the river to get us. So it got confused with the app, but it could have been a first time user here. And so anyway, those are my questions.
Wonderful. Anyone else wish to weigh in on this?
I'm just going to weigh in just quickly on, my concern is the future costs because we don't really know what's happening with the federal government and that is a big concern. So the rest of the questions, I appreciate.
Councilmember Barnacle?
Yeah. Thank you for the presentation. I think Lumago was really successful at building buzz. And I'm looking forward to seeing the opportunity costs, specifically, what's the cost of increasing frequency on other fixed route transit lines? I'm sure I want to see that when we comes back. And I think what you heard from Councilmember Now is we have district elections now and I don't think that it's going to be, I don't think, even though my district's pretty well covered, I don't feel like, I would feel comfortable supporting something that wasn't going to be expanding it to cover the whole city. Because then we truly are just not providing equal service. So when it comes back, my guidance is that I'd like to see something that, what it would cost to expand it citywide and provide equal service. And then also, what are the opportunity costs? What else could we be funding in terms of just our fixed route lines? But thank you.
Ryan, I think I fall in the same category as most of the council. I mean, only one of the council members actually is in the service zone, I think. And so we all would like to see an expansion, but we like to see it for other reasons as well. And I think we got to focus on what the goal was here because it's a pilot. You got to know what your goal and goals were. Were they to help downtown congestion? Were they to help climate? Were they all these things? And so which ones are priorities when we're talking about spending money to achieve a goal? It's not just, it's not a simple equation on that. And my concern is also what you can do during the pilot to improve performance. Because what we've said is that service area denial is a common thing. People poke in their number in South Petaluma, Southeast Petaluma and get no service. Whereas if the map had a walking range of five minutes, which is what anybody would expect with bus service or even 10 minutes. So those shouldn't be called conditional denials. Those should be yes, you can. They're yeses and they need to be said, and you walked to this point for the meetup. And I mean, even Uber tells you walk to this point for the meetup. If we're at 10 minutes, certainly Lotresara School, Meowak School, Petaluma Junior, McNear, St. Vincent's High, St. Vincent's Grade School, all within the 10 minute walk zone. So it really opens up for twice as many people as it looks like we serve currently. And then there's trickier little ones like the Lucky Shopping Center, North Boulevard is in. The police station across the street is not in. If you need to do a fix-it ticket, the service denial. If, you know, the same thing. If you enter Friedman's address, since it's within a complex, it doesn't show as a pickup. Whereas Lumago runs right down McDowell in front of it, but the parcel address doesn't work that way. So I would like to see some of that happen before the pilot runs out. If we're first into year two now, are we in year two of the pilot?
Yeah.
And so I would love to see the pilot for year three say, look, it's expanded. All you got to do is walk a block. And you'll hear me pitch walk a block a lot on issues around here.
One quick thing on that, if I may. I think people often view the zone two as like a firm zone. It's not like there's a wall around the service. With any of our services, we would encourage people of your than a quarter mile or so to walk into it. Of course, not everyone can given their mobility, but also consideration of people using the service as well.
Yeah, the app is good at offering you to put a pin on a map and you figure it out. But you figure it out is not a great tech solution. Usually there's a better way to do it than that. And I am concerned about the Junior High, the JC and Corona Station and Corey Heights. Those all seem like ideal fixed routes. And we've upped our interval. What is our interval on our backbone bus routes?
Generally, it's running every 20 or 30 minutes during peak time, 30 off. Although we did increase frequency on routes, two and 11 during peak times, starting about three months ago. So on two of our major arterials through that same SETCA grant, we're able to provide that for a three year period.
So that's great marketing we need to push concurrent with Lumago. I just wanted to say though, no local funds spend on this and it's a pilot. No other city adopted in on this. Petaluma just leads and we are recognized as a leader around the county. So though we grill you, you're doing cool stuff in Lumago. And hopefully we can figure out a way to expand it, though I am very worried about funding. So I want to thank you for being here and I know I've asked you to stick around for the general public comment period in case there's anything we want to have you respond to at the time or mainly for you to hear people's concerns. So thank you very much. Thank you very much for the presentation tonight. And that does move us into general public comment for the evening. And during general public comment, the public is invited to make comments on items of public interest that are within the city council's subject matter jurisdiction, not listed on the current agenda. Public comments are limited up to three minutes per person. Depending on the number of persons wishing to address the council, time will be allocated in equal shares, totaling no more than 20 minutes. If we have more than 20 people wishing to speak, additional comments will be heard after the last business item on the agenda. So I'd like to ask the clerk if she would read our messaging and lead us on into this?
Yes. We did receive 10 general public comments ahead of the meeting and those are posted on the website. And at this time, I will start a 30 second clock. So during these 30 seconds, members of the public should bring their speaker cards to my desk if they have not already done so. Speakers are reminded to be respectful in their comments and that this meeting is being translated. Please pause between sentences for translation.
So we have 13 public, general public comment cards tonight and that works to a 90 second clock. I'd like to ask the clerk to set the clock at 90 seconds. So we have equal shares. The first speaker is Ed Enzore, to be followed by Jody Johnson.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. I want to talk specifically about the Rainier Roundabout. So I started looking into it and all the roundabout literature you can find talks about reducing serious accidents and fatalities. So Petaluma sent me all the accidents for that area. There are zero fatalities in the last 25 years. There's 10 accidents, three with cycles, seven with cars, but you don't know the severity of the accident. Or if it was even caused in the intersection, it could be nearby. So 90% of zero is still zero. You're not reducing any fatalities. That's just math, your numbers. The second thing was speed. So in 2020, your city did a survey from the engineering department and they found it should be rated to 35 miles an hour, which it currently is. They had an 88% compliance with that speed. So speed is not a problem. But I think what happened was the current surveys for the roundabout show the same speed. So what that means is the lane dieting or road calming, whatever the word is, didn't do anything. The speeds are the same post and pre lane reconfiguration. Did it calm the road? Absolutely not. The numbers speak for themselves and it's all city data. And the last one, people, you know, they don't dig deep enough. So I found the greenest country I could find, Sweden. They had a strictness on cars. And when you dig deep into it about fuel emissions, they talk about intersections.
Thank you very much. 90 seconds goes very fast. And I do want to remind all speakers that if they have written comments or an email to send in, it will be still accepted and still posted so that all your comments can be in the record. Jody Johnson should be followed by Janice Barker.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council, City Staff. We, the mobile park residents of Youngstown, Little Woods and Capri, once again bring to the attention of our community increased retaliatory and abusive practices by the bad actor large investment group park owners. In Youngstown, after last year's arbitration's decision, the owners worked out attorney to attorney, a payment plan without interest for the senior park residents regarding prorated amounts of the awarded $118 per month increase. Important to note, prorated amounts are not allowed under the RSO, but Youngstown residents were made to pay prorated amounts back to December 2023. This payment structure was set forth well before any appeal. Recently, the appeal decision came down and legal fees were vacated from the original arbitration decision. In turn, park owners reached out to residents' attorney about a ceasefire regarding a future appeal. Last Thursday, a senior resident went onto the rental portal to find a date for a survey. Much to her horror, uploaded already to the November statement was almost $2,000, which would be automatically deducted on November 1st, in addition to her ground rent and water, trash and sewer for the month. If this resident had not seen this, on her November payment of over $3,200 would have bounced, leading to a three day notice of eviction.
Thank you. Janice Barker to be followed by Tim Portius.
Good evening. The granddaughter of Lucy, our 98 year old resident who has lived in Youngstown for 37 years, finding out about this could not take the chance to let her grandmother know. It would have been too much to handle, especially since social security could only barely cover half of that. To cover their tracks, having heard residents found out they were rescinding the payment plan, management tried to send out a letter that was postmarked two days after our discovery, telling residents all would be due. No explanation for what they were pulling the payment plan, just simply they could. In addition, we found out on October 17th that Youngstown park owners filed an appeal on September 30th after stating they wanted a ceasefire. Cruelty comes in mind, but more importantly, elder abuse. Greed has superseded all empathy or common decencies when it comes to our mobile park residents. Worse yet, they installed a community manager that was given a cease and desist by residents, a cease and desist order by residents last year after an extortion attempt coercing seniors into giving up their rights and giving into increases that had already been denied to park owners. Our residents reminded upper park owner management that they would not allow such a manager to have access to their financial information. A petition along with a cease and desist was sent again and residents on Saturday.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tim Portius to be followed by Marie.
On Saturday, received a letter from the same person saying she was the manager regardless. We will fight this as it puts seniors at risk every day. Then at Little Woods, with an arbitration decision pending, final closing briefs are filed with the arbitrator with new accounting charts, all but removing the evidence they attempted to use as operating expenses and losses. Interestingly, no new evidence can be submitted after the arbitration is over. But the bad actor, Harmony's attorney CPA, who testified at arbitration, was insistent that park owners remove the fabricated costs of the fence, removing all parking and an eviction, which never happened, from their operating losses. The why that happened because Little Woods residents testified to the truth and thankfully, an expert witness for the park owner possibly chose not to risk his own CPA license by furthering fabrications he learned were false. Then Little Woods residents get notice of increase of garbage because it's purported that they contaminated the dumpsters even though they are up front and anyone of the public has access. Residents are fighting the latest attempt at an undocumented attempt at a pass through.
Marie, to be followed by Bert Boda.
Thank you. Resident's continue to be overcharged from the 2024 and now 2025 for an unauthorized pass through under the ordinance. Arbitration dismissed, but Harmony racking up money they were not entitled to dating all the way back to last May, when they put the ground rent with sewer, et cetera, as just ground rent and then added sewer, trash, et cetera, again. Harmony does nothing to adjust the overages. Standing up to these bad actors has brought harm to our residents. But if we don't stand up against these bad actors, all of our residents continue to be abused and taken advantage of. False narratives are rampant by these large investment groups. Notably that their constitutional rights and their business plan are being trampled on. The truth is that they bought after due diligence and are simply not happy with profits, not happy that profits couldn't be doubled or tripled for their investors. They knew RSOs existed. The truth is that residents who own their mobile homes and maintain their mobile homes, the true supplier of this affordable housing, has and continue to be taken advantage of and more. These can't be the types of business owners Petaluma stands for. In most businesses, detailed disregard for laws and ordinances would be addressed.
Thank you. Bert Boda to be followed by Ivan Arano.
It's time these investment groups who practice business secretly so as not to be exposed be stopped. It's that simple, but the how is not.
Thank you very much. Ivan Arano to be followed by Christina Yonkers.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council Members. I stand here before today because I have personally experienced what I believe to be repeated abuses of power by former Vice Mayor Janice C. Thompson. Actions that no citizen should ever face an elected official. Over 19 years, I have documented multiple instances where former Vice Mayor, now a City Council Member, used her position not to serve the community, but to target, harass and intimidate residents, including me. These actions include using city court enforcement as a personal tool to harass and intimidate me, even attempting to illegally find me, then lowering the penalty if I agree to drop the court hearing. Trespassing on my property, those same people, twice, unannounced and without my consent, taking pictures and sending me the pictures as evidence just to prove their felony. Unbelievable. This lady photographed me one time from her car as thought I was committing a crime when I was just doing my, replacing a flat tire in my own driveway. During that time, I developed severe anxiety and recurring nightmares for in the city my fabricate, and I continue section eight.
Thank you. Christina Yonkers to be followed by Catherine Babowski.
Good evening. I'm one of the residents at Youngstown that received the letter that as of the first of November, I would be owing one thousand nine hundred and sixty-nine dollars and forty-eight cents as a one-time payment, and this would be in addition to my regular rent, which is about fourteen hundred a month. The park owners, they didn't care about the problem with breaking the agreement that they had, and we did believe them when we were told a schedule would be set up for us. Well, will I and other park residents be able to pay this additional money by the first of November? It's kind of doubtful. My best guess is the next thing we'll be receiving from management will be eviction notices for non-payment of our rent.
Thank you very much, Catherine Babowski, to be followed by Angie Cruz.
Yes, my name is Catherine Babowski. I live at the Little Woods Villanueva Park. First, I want to mention that Harmony Community's been putting state taxes on our rent bill. They're now with the state, and they're pocketing that money to Harmony Community's pocket. And also, too, the on-site park manager is also having, is in, her family and her friends are in fire violation, this fire and safety code violation. And also, too, there's no Pentalum Transit that runs on Lakeville at all, Saturdays and Sundays, and the Lumago could come over there and start running the bus over to Lakeville and Baywood. And also, too, if you want to take the bus, Pentalum Transit, you got to walk all the way to Baywood and McDowell and stand there for the bus the whole time because there's no bus bench to sit on. That's a half-hour walk. And there should be some benches to sit there and wait for a bus. And also, too, this, Harmony is breaking all those state laws everywhere. They need to be stopped and put out of business now. And this manager we have is also trying to charge us for outsiders' garbage using our dumpsters that should not be on Perry Lane, should be inside the Mobile Home Park, not on Perry Lane.
Thank you. Angie Cruz to be followed by Maureen Gottschall.
Hi, everyone. I just wanted to say ditto to please adding Lumago to Little Woods and the East Side. I agree with what Karen Now and Brian Barnacle have stated. And then also, just not only for you all at City Council, but also the public that may be hearing this, if you didn't catch that in the letter that Youngstown and Petaluma Residents United stated for park owners to fraudulently create records for an arbitration, like, I think that in itself should speak out about the kind of business that they are and the interests that they have for a city that is super great about, well, I would like to say, and I'm sure you all agree, is super age-friendly and takes care of our seniors. I think it's really sad that Harmony tried to forge that they evicted a senior and had all these expenses when really that senior is still there and didn't go through any of what they claimed. And to have to put somebody through that, especially a senior citizen, to on day of the arbitration, have to speak up for themselves, I think that can take a really big toll, not only on the person, but the community, and also right to Youngstown residents that are going through this, all senior citizens. It's sad that they're really attacking our seniors in our community.
Thank you. Maureen Gottschall to be followed by John Hanania.
Good evening. I'm requesting the City Council establish an internal review process to ensure that all city departments conducting data collection and public surveys meet their respective industry standards before presenting findings to the council and public. We have now seen multiple examples where the city's data collection and surveys have failed to meet professional standards. Members of the public have identified these deficiencies and brought them to the council's attention, yet this flawed data continues to be used as the basis for policy decisions and/or planning. Using substandard data erodes the credibility of both the city staff and council. It undermines public trust in the decision-making process and leads to policies built on inaccurate foundations. Our community deserves better, and our local businesses deserve accurate information when policies will directly impact their operations. I respectfully request the City Council establish a quality assurance protocol, require independent review, create accountability measures, and pause the use of any flawed data. It is the council's responsibility to hold city staff accountable on behalf of the public. This means not simply accepting staff presentations at face value, but ensuring the information you're using to make decisions meets basic professional standards. Our community depends on sound data to make sound decisions. Let's put a process in place that ensures we get it right the first time. Thank you. I was going to say something about Lumago, but I don't have time. Thanks.
We'd be happy to take that in an email and writing, too. Thank you. John Hanania to be followed by David Saul.
Kevin, I brought something special for you. Decibel meter, so nobody can be having a power trip and yank your strength for decorum, decorum. A mayor's job is to get everybody together, the council, the community, and this is not happening here. And what I'm really not happy about is a new policy for decorum. Your new policy for decorum is absolutely unconstitutional, setting the city for liability. The police department are on notice if you give unlawful order in any way, shape, or form. Any police officer who will act up on it, or a supervisor, they will be sued. The police department will be sued. Every single one of you up there will be sued who will act up on it. You have violated my rights. Mr. Power Trip over there, he had no reason to keep interrupting me. What happened twice, I was not in violation of any decorum. Okay? I have informed the police of certain videos they can watch that's taken place by Attorney CJ Kersham, who cited endless and endless and endless cases by the Supreme Court. I really hope that we don't have a problem, and I really hope we don't end up in court. So I advise you to act up appropriately. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. De.
David Saul is our last speaker for the evening.
Good evening. Disliking or disagreeing with a candidate for elected office is a perfectly fine basis for not voting for the candidate or for campaigning against them, but it's not a valid basis for a recall of an elected official. Recalls are part of our.
I'm going to have to ask you to stop. We have an item on our agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry.
About this.
Okay.
I think your comment is timely for that, and I will save that card for that moment.
Apologies.
Thank you. That closes public comment for the evening and brings it back up here to the council. And I think I'll start off to my left tonight with Councilmember Shribbs and ask for your comments and activities.
Okay, just a report of the last couple of weeks. Went to a lot of different activities over the last few weeks. One was the opening of Reuse Hub over at the Outlet Mall. There's lots of activities going on there and repair work and reuse of lots of materials. So, and they're also going to have a concierge desk there that might be able to answer a lot of questions about what do you do with things rather than just toss it in the trashcan. The second one was at the Petaluma River Apartments, had their re-grand opening. They remodeled, put on, I guess, new roofing and sides and changed several rooms around, and they even added five ADUs at the base where there were empty storefronts. And they talked about the price of those five ADUs, and they were able to do it even cheaper than I could even do my garage. So they did really well with that, and they even looked pretty nice. So, yeah, they're all filled. The, there was a senior resource fair I attended, I think a lot of us did. It was well-attended, lots of tabling there, lots of information was being exchanged. So the person, there was one person that did that, and they need to be recognized for that. There was a Pride Festival going on at the same day, so was able to move over there before it ended, watched a little bit of the wrestling, and that also was very well-attended. Lots of folks were tented out there and tabling, talking about all sorts of things, very well-supported. There was a lunch at a, that the Chamber of Commerce put on, and they invited six of the top health leaders in our whole community that were there. And because I was the only councilman was able to make that one because I know it was in conflict with maybe some other things going on, but basically, where they're very loud and clear, basically, the quote was, "Our system is broken." And it's really sad that what may be happening. The expectation is that our insurances in all sorts of ways are going to be increasing rapidly, in fact, possibly doubling in some cases. So expect that to be happening shortly. Even California coverage is going to be increasing quite a bit. Then another thing, because federal government just shutting down healthy, health clinics and some, and reducing prices on some of the hospitals, that they said, "We're going to be losing within the next two years, three years at the most, twenty percent of all of our health clinics and hospitals here in California." So that was what they were clear about. So we're under attack by the federal government is removing all sorts of monies from the entire health system, and other states are even getting it worse than we are, because there was news about that, I heard from a lot of the rural communities out there in farmland are getting hit really hard right now, thirty percent losses in clinics are beginning. So, but there was a few good news in there. They just said that they are going, they're updating their systems and doing everything that they can and working together as a team. So one of the good parts is all the different, all the different hospitals, the health districts, are all working together as a team. They're meeting at the state level, trying to push things into the state-level agencies. They're all committed to working very hard for us here in Petaluma. So that's some of the good things, and there's some new programs, and they're even figuring out ways of using AI within the health system to really improve efficiencies, to keep costs down as low as possible, because anyway, hard times are coming. Anyway, so I wanted to make sure everyone aware of that. At the North Bay Water, Watershed Association, there was a speaker about honeybees, and honeybees don't just live in hives, they also live in the natural habitat, particularly holes in trees, small to large, and we need to conserve and save our trees that are dead and have holes in them because that's a huge habitat for both native and non-native bees. The No Kings March, I think there was at least three of us, I know there was right up front, a couple others joined in. So we did that on Saturday, and I walked from the front all the way to the back, did as fast counting as I could, and I'm, I was estimating over four thousand people, I think, showed up there for, by my estimate. I just tried to count as fast as I could, I couldn't quite keep up with all the folks going by. SFEI is having a meeting tomorrow, I'll join in about the sediment study at Almond Marsh, so I'll be participating with that. And I went to the Builders Exchange Meeting last week, and Amy Dutrow is there, and even though we are sort of fighting that a little bit on the asphalt plant there, her family is also, does all the dredging, is right now, has a dredger working on a river right now at the base, and the dredging is not being sent to Scholenberg Park. I've expected to go to Scholenberg Park to see dredge spoils dumped in. That's not where it's being dumped, it's being taken to Montezuma, where they're actually rebuilding wetlands there, and it's done by, in a private way. Person has got that all organized and doing very well financially by accepting all the dredge materials out of the bay. Really a nice spot, maybe we should all go see it these days to see what that's like. But anyway, so, anyway, the dredging is happening and is being deposited not in Scholenberg Park, but in somewhere else out in the Bay Area, the Delta Area. Okay, so that's as fast as I can get through mine.
That was particularly fast, and I just want to note that your fast count also corroborates with official counts that we've had seen circulating, too. A good day at No Kings. Councilmember Quint.
Thank you. So real quick, no liaison meetings to report on since last council meeting. On the sixteenth, I also attended with Councilmember Shribbs the Sonoma County Business and Agriculture Consortium reception, that's a mouthful. I also was able to make the Pride Festival and want to give a tip of the cap to the organizers. I thought that was wonderful. Yesterday, I put in my volunteer hours with the Petaluma Panthers Football Program. My son's team was very excited because they scored their first touchdown of the year. Speaking of youth sports, on Saturday, while attending my son's baseball game, the umpire didn't show up, and I was asked to step in. And I was reminded that umpiring a Little League baseball game is a little bit like serving on city council. Regardless of the call, you're going to make about half the people upset. So that was my weekend. Thank you.
And thank you. Councilmember DeCarle.
No liaison reports. We did not have Parks and Rec last week, we didn't meet a quorum, so I think everything from that agenda will get funneled into the next. But I did this weekend attend the St. Vincent Gala, St. Vincent High School Gala. You know, they do a fundraiser every year to help the school, and if any of you have been following them, they've had some financial woes, and so this weekend, they had a very successful fundraiser that will help them continue on. You know, they do put out a lot of good students that really give back to the community and contribute to it. And that's all I have for this evening.
Okay, thank you very much. Councilmember Barnacle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a few things. I'd like just make sure staff follows up with the residents at the Mobile Home Parks about some of the things we heard tonight. Also, the comments about having, not having bus stops at, or benches at bus stops, I think it needs to be taken. I don't see Jared here, but I'd really like to make sure that that's something that doesn't fall off the radar as well because, and then, so my one liaison appointment, since last meeting, we had a Planning Commission meeting where we poured over our ADU ordinance and our residential care facility zoning codes for like upwards of three hours, maybe close to four hours. And there's a whole mess of things that we have to do to come into compliance with state law, but then there's also some other things, too. So stay tuned, there'll be some more, more coming from Planning Commission in terms of like real concrete proposals in short order.
Thank you. Councilmember Kate Thompson.
For my SCTA, since the 101 is open, there's a lot of conversation about the backup in the commute, and so we are sending a letter to the TAM, the TAM Transportation Authority of Marin. Their meeting is Wednesday to discuss changing the hours. So we're looking at possibly six to nine AM, three to six thirty AM, and we don't want to wait months or longer for the consideration of these changes. Some commutes have increased by at least an hour and a half to two hours. So we're encouraging the change of hours, encouraging any mitigation efforts such as ramp metering, do not increase the impacts to local streets. And so there's a lot that's going to be packed into this meeting, and so it's good that we're coordinating with TAM. And as smart, as SMART, there's discussion about the Jennies at Grade Crossing, and I'll be taking a tour of that area. And the real problem with Jennies is it's two, it's two tracks that cross at the same time, and it's within a neighborhood, so it's really the double tracks that is the biggest concern for SMART, for safety. So I'll give more input or an update at the next meeting. I'll have my GSA meeting on Thursday, and I've also, there's a couple of things about bike accidents. I just heard about another bike accident at the Target Center, and the bike hit two cars and really damaged the cars. And the same thing happened, you know, with Jerry when he was hit by a car. I mean, the e-bikes are, they're kind of out of control, and I know that we're working on it with the police department, but I'd like to know if there's anything more that we can do as far as ordinance or to move this quicker, because the community is getting really concerned about safety for them. And the other thing is, I had a meeting with Senator Mark, Senator McGuire, with the League of California Cities, and it was put on by the league and Natalie Rogers. And we're really talking about Prop One, the mental health dollars that are at the state, and Prop Four for climate, and we really want to start getting listened to see what kind of dollars we can get back from the state. I appreciate Councilmember Shribbs' comments on healthcare because what he said is actually very true, and there's going to be a lot of people without healthcare that can't afford it because of the cost going up, and I'm real concerned about just what's happening in our local community and hoping we have a hospital, because a city can't be without a hospital. And I also want to state that Mark Milberg, the mayor of Nevada, passed away. We were at the League of California Cities together in Long Beach, and a few days later, he just left us, and it was really shocking. But this Friday, the city of Nevada will be having an open house to honor Mark, and I hope people can attend. It's at four o'clock at City Hall. And I just want to tell people, when you're not feeling well and you have heartburn or you're having sweats, don't, don't take it lightly. don't, don't take it lightly. There's signs of heart attacks and normally those are the signs for a woman. But I know two men, local, this happened, one lived and my friend passed away. And so don't, listen to your health and make sure you go to the doctor.
Thank you. Vice Mayor now.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Since our last city council meeting, I've had the opportunity to attend several great community events. Together with the mayor, Assemblyman Damon Conley, Congressman Mike Thompson, and many others, I attended the ribbon cutting for the new Eden House building, which adds much-needed housing units to our community. I'm especially proud to share that I was also present at the original opening and ribbon cutting some 20 years ago. It's inspiring to see how far we've come. Later that day, many of us celebrated the grand opening of the reuse hub at the Petaluma Factory Outlets. If you haven't been yet, I highly recommend stopping by. It's a unique concept and a wonderful asset to our community located in the factory outlets. I'd also like to acknowledge Nicola Frye and our senior committee for organizing an informative and well-attended senior symposium at Lucese Community Center. Hopefully, this will be the first of many to come. Last week, I had the pleasure of sharing some local modern-day history at the Petaluma Adobe with this year's Petaluma Chamber of Commerce Leadership Class. The onsite State Park aide provided a tour of the historic buildings and discussed the early days of Genovaleo's Ranchero. I also learned that the State Park archaeologists have discovered a Native American village site on the property and now working with Great and Ranch Rio to determine the best path forward, preserving the site's history and sharing it with future park visitors and our local fourth-grade students who study California history. This afternoon, I spoke with a group of Petaluma Boy Scouts about my role as a city council member. And later this week, I will be speaking to Petaluma High School students as well. And I want to remind everybody that it's great that you come, thank you for coming to City Hall, thank you for your letters, but we also need to vote. If you want to make a change, vote and tell your neighbors and family and friends to vote. And this is just your reminder, November 4th. Thank you.
And thank you. Can always count for an uplifting message there. So before reporting on my appointments, I just want to note that this weekend, there was a very large protest march downtown. And in many, in fact, in many towns. And it's a very tense time in our country with, you know, divisive opinion coming from every direction. But I want to thank the organizers and the participants for keeping the protest peaceful. Second, I want to thank the Petaluma Police Department for their efforts to keep the protest peaceful. I appreciate the skill and the professionalism of the Petaluma Police Department that day. And the people in the rally and the march, they really felt the connection to their Petaluma Police Department. I didn't realize that the term deescalate could apply proactively to traffic control. But that was what was on display on Saturday. Perimeters got expanded as necessary to minimize points of traffic conflict. Detours and redirection helped keep the event from becoming unmanageable. In this time, which seems to be defined by government versus the people, we see that in Petaluma, that's not true. Petaluma Government and the Petaluma Police Department are here to serve and protect the people. So I do want to give appreciation to the people of Petaluma and the Petaluma Police Department. Also, I note, many of us attended the ribbon cutting for downtown River Affordable Housing and the 81, now 86 units there. But we have over 1,500 affordable housing units in Petaluma. Two-thirds of them are older than this one. Two-thirds of them are from before the year 2000. That means two-thirds of all the houses that we have in our affordable program are 20, 25 years old or more. And that, you know, in the 1990s, the city of Petaluma grew 25% over that 10-year period, which did a lot of, we were able to put a lot of money into affordable housing. But since 2020, we've only grown at one-fifth of that rate, at one-half of 1%. And that leaves us behind on being able to help with affordable housing. And as we noted, housing become, homelessness needs housing for solutions. So we have our work cut out for us. At the senior symposium, it was nice to give opening remarks and again, give credit to Nicola Frye for all of her work there. The Petaluma Pride Parade at the Fairgrounds is bigger than ever. Also had an opportunity to meet with Cafe Puente. And if you haven't met them, they're who is bridging Petaluma's Spanish-speaking and English-speaking gap. And also had a chance to go to North Bay Industries to celebrate Disability Awareness Month. And they make, this is in Roanoke Park now, but every city was invited to join and support. They make intermittent American flags for veterans there. And it's just really impressive what this disability industry does. They connect housing for those folks and jobs for those folks. It's inspirational to have that in our community. And I think I'll hold on, anything else, and turn it on over to our Assistant City Manager in tonight to help us out with the city comments, if any.
Actually, nothing to report tonight, thank you, Eric.
Okay. And our city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to make a couple of brief mentions in response to some of the public comment tonight about the city's policies for decorum. So our prior longstanding city council rules address civility and decorum in the chambers. And our recent policy, our recent updated policy adopted by the council does the same. And both of those policies are noteworthy for applying the same rules for decorum and civility to the public that they do to the staff, that they do to the city council, we're all subject to those rules. They are constitutional and they're in accordance, and I mean both in accordance with the US Constitution and the California Constitution, and also with the California Government Code, as long as they are implemented in accordance with those important laws. And under those rules, and I can refer you specifically to paragraph F of, on page four of the new City of Petaluma Decorum and Order Policy for Public Meetings, any legislative body member, not just the mayor, may raise the issue of decorum in the chambers. That's a permitted thing for council members to do when they feel that we need to revisit our rules for ensuring everyone feels free to participate in the council's meeting. So any questions, I'd be happy to address them, but I just wanted to mention that. Thank you.
Thanks for bringing that to the forefront, I guess, again. It's always good to remember that. And that brings us to our consent calendar for the evening. Not seeing anyone rise and leave. We'll move right into the consent calendar for the evening. And I'll look up and down the dais to see if anyone has an item they wish to remove from this. And Councilmember DeCarly?
Yeah, I'd like to talk about the amendment, you know, 4.41. Let's talk about that item.
Is that item four?
Is that seven, I think? Yeah.
Okay, right.
Seven.
And so would you like to make comments on that? Or would you like to have separate conversation on that, a separate vote? Are you, do you have a particular question we can address, get from staff at this time?
Sure, I mean, we can start with that. I mostly, you know, I, we've received a lot of public comment on it since the last meeting. And, you know, that generated a lot of new questions for me, which I submitted to staff earlier, but haven't gotten full replies on. And so in, in some regard, I feel I didn't have everything answered to, you know, fully supported in light of some new concerns raised.
So is there a specific question that you feel can be answered tonight? Or is that a difficulty?
I mean, I had probably 15 questions, so I don't, I don't really want to sit here through all of them. But I, I mean, a lot of it's just really concern around, you know, this, this being loosely written and, you know, it conflicting with state law. And, you know, this being a countywide approved measure, you know, where, where our city is now changing things. And so, and then, and then concerns about too, you know, the, the bond issuer, you know, being aware of, you know, that if Measure H goes away, then we don't have to pay them back at all. I've never seen a situation in which.
So let's put that in the form of a question and get staff to jump in and, and we'll, we'll have questions on all of the consent calendar. But let's start with seven and, and put the form of a question you'd like to have for staff.
Yeah, I mean, I just, I, can you, can you speak to all of that, Eric, without it being an individual questions?
Sure. And our, our, our financial advisor, Stephen Gortler's here and also Assistant City Manager Brian Cochran, who has responsibility for our finance activity under the city manager's direction, can also help address. We did receive a question, a set, a set of questions from a member of the public today, to which I sent a response and also included the council members on that response. And the, the main thing I think I want to emphasize regarding that, the questions in the response focuses on the issue of whether or not the city of Petaluma, as a charter city, has the power to enact its own authority to issue bond debt without reliance on, on general state law. And the answer is that it absolutely does. And that is in accordance with the holding in the case of City of Santa Monica versus Grubb from 1966. It's 245 Cal App second to 718. And I'm going to read what the court said. Says, "In the case at bench, it has responded its contention that a municipality has no power to issue bonds unless the power's been expressly confirmed." And then it refers to authorities cited in the, in the, in the case. And then the court held, "The law of California, as interpreted in the Redondo Beach case, is that a chartered city has such a power, subject only to limitations imposed by the charter or the constitution. Neither the state constitution or the city charter prohibits the issuance of bonds by the city." That was with respect to the city of Santa Monica and Petaluma's charter similarly permits.
What type of project was that, that bond issued for? And is that, is that different than, you know, police fire facility? As far as any contradiction with state law?
The issue, so the nature of the facilities doesn't matter. The issue is whether or not a charter city power is sufficient to establish authority for a bond issuance. And the, the fact is that it is sufficient unless the charter itself limits it. The other thing I addressed in, in the response to the member of the public is that, that there's nothing that prevents the city from utilizing its charter city power to authorize issuance of bonds and fully complying with the, the county code and voter-approved measure, Measure H. It can do both. And the fact that Measure H allocates funds to the various jurisdictions, including Petaluma, not only does not preclude us bonding our share of those revenues, but in fact, Measure H expressly provides that the recipients of those funds, the local jurisdictions, are expressly authorized to bond the proceeds. And that's exactly what Chapter 4.41 would do in accordance with the city's charter power, to authorize such debt issuance. And it's also important to point out and be aware that Chapter 4.41, which is before the council for second reading tonight and was introduced at the prior meeting, does not in and of itself authorize, it doesn't issue any bonds, it's just authority to issue bonds. It's the council that must do that. And in doing so, it is they who must prescribe and approve what the terms of the bond issuance are, what the maturities are, what the, what the amount of the bonds being sold is and, and other terms. So that's why those provisions are not in the Chapter 4.41 to provide the council that flexibility and authority. It must be done at a public meeting by the council, by official action. So I think those are, I think those really, that encapsulate the primary answers to those questions. They're, just to emphasize, there is no conflict between, in accordance with the case law I just read, which is good law. There's zero negative authority on that case. It's fully in effect. There's no conflict between the cities exercising its charter city power. It's done it multiple times in the past. We have a number of chapters in our finance title that provides similar authority.
Let me ask if there are further questions?
Sure. I'll stop there.
I know the city's done it in the past and in some ways it's a standard practice. But my concern is with it being a countywide measure. And then with, with the case law that you cite, was the funding source to repay that bond, was that, was that some voter-approved message as well? Or was that part of any sort of, was that a city fund? What was that source or is that applicable? The, the type of source?
I'm trying to get at what your question is. Is the question, is it a problem in terms of exercise of our, of our bonding power, our charter city power? That what we're bonding is the proceeds from Measure H? Is that what you're asking?
I'm asking in two ways. And part of it was the case law study is, I don't, again, I'm asking if it's, if it's applicable, the funding source to repay the, the debt and the bond.
So when a city proposes a general revenue bond, that's got to be approved by the voters. And it can be only done for, for property acquisition. And it's a very high threshold for approval. But there's a lot more flexibility that exists when it's a special revenue bond. And, and it's very important to know that with respect to Measure H funds, those are not the city's general fund monies, those are the proceeds of the transaction and use tax that the county voters approved. And, and the, the bonding of those funds and the way that it's provided for in Chapter 4.41 does not place at risk the city's general fund. It's, it's not, it's not available and it's not, there's no recourse to the general fund for repayment of that debt. And as we talked about, when that item was presented to be introduced, and it was Mr. Gortler, who's, who's here in our meeting tonight, who mentioned that it's well-understood by the bond market that, that voter-approved revenue measures are subject to amendment by the voters. That's well-understood. And that is a risk factor that investors take into account when they purchase those bonds. But, but that risk is not the city's.
Okay, let's ask, let him ask another question here.
So.
Yeah, so I, I mean, I had thought of to, well, let me ask this first. You know, is it possible for the bond issuer to, Measure H goes away and that funding source dries up? And we say, oh, well, we lost our source, you know, you don't get paid. Can they come at the city with a lawsuit and attack it that way to get repaid for their loan?
You know, people sue for all kinds of things that lack merit. But they would have no right of recovery against the city. And that is something that would be discussed in much greater detail in any issuance that the council may approve pursuant to the authority of Chapter 4.41.
And then my last question. In considering alternatives to fund the facility, was it considered by staff to, to put something on the ballot to see if, if the city wants to approve, you know, purchasing a bond or, you know, doing a bond? And, and having it voted on that way instead of us making the decision about it? Or, you know, did staff consider pulling from different funds? You know, because the staff's talked about the urgency of all this. So has staff considered making other cuts in, you know, in our budget to try to make this happen? And, and get that money instead that way, instead of purchasing a bond and, you know, having, having it cost a lot more over a long period of time for, you know, future generations? And having that interest?
Yeah, please. I'm going to leave that to, we're going to hear a lot more tonight about the, the ways in which staff have managed to really fine-tune and reduce the cost of that project and have it be poised to be delivered promptly.
That's a very, very good point that we have a lot of staff in the room for that item. We're willing to hold that question for that item. What's that, nine?
What you want to give?
Well, I mean, I think it's worth talking about now. We're about to vote on it.
We're setting up rules in place. We're not actually doing bonding or talking about the budget of the project at this point. We're putting rules in place that would allow for a bonding if the project's approved and if, if, if and if the next all things. So we can roll that into the, is there a succinct answer you have?
Well, I can just maybe say two things. First is that this already is a voter-approved measure, right? So the voters of Sonoma County already voted to approve, to, to tax themselves a, a new sales tax to be able to fund two major categories of things. New staffing and upgraded staffing throughout the county for upgraded and improved fire services and improved and renovated fire facilities. So we're, we're abiding by the letter of the measure that the voters approved by now choosing to, potentially, if, if the facility and the bond go, go forward, to invest in new City of Petaluma facilities that would serve our fire department and our community. So, so that's kind of one piece on the county and the voter approval side. But the other piece is just the budget generally. And I would say, yes, there are a variety of funding sources in this project, and it's going to take a variety of funding sources to get it built. So in addition to the proposed Measure H bond, we also will be coming forward to the council with a proposed general, general fund lease revenue bond. That will be absolutely critical. That will fund the other half of the facility that's not related to fire. There are also some grants in this project. There are impact fees in this project. There's even revenue from the sale of the existing police station property in this project. So I think we've done a, a good job so far of gathering all available resources to be able to finance this important project for the city, you know, to get to the project that you're going to see later on tonight. And happy to talk more about, you know, the details of any of the financing pieces or anything.
Thanks, Brian. I'll just quickly add that this action before the council tonight is absolutely in accordance with the Petaluma's powers as a charter city, its home rule powers, and the terms of Measure H as, as approved by the voters, including the authorization to bond those proceeds. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you, if you say so. I just want to make sure we're doing things in accordance with, you know, the voters' will on this.
Okay. Thank you. And although we didn't separate the consent calendar, it's all as one. Is there any other questions on that or any other item in the?
I was just going to make a motion to, and eliminate seven and do seven separately in case we want to vote separately on seven. So I'll make a motion to approve.
It isn't, it isn't quite motion time yet.
Oh, okay.
But we're still at that part where we're saying, are we going to treat these as two separate? I think you're requesting separate seven, the second reading of what we voted on a few weeks ago. Okay. So with no further questions on that, I'd like to open public comment on the complete consent calendar.
There's, I have questions on other items.
Oh, please.
So on item three, I don't know if Cory wants to speak about the treasures report. I just, I only have a couple of questions about this, but I, I'm curious, how, how much risk are we allowed to take in, in the investments that we make? And are we allowed to make investments outside of LAIF, PFM and CAM? How, how broad can we go with investments?
So we are allowed to take virtually no risk in our investments. There's three primary goals with the investments the city makes. We need liquidity. We have to safeguard our assets, and we have to get a reasonable rate of return. And so we try to diversify our portfolio, but in very secure, risk-free investments.
Okay. And, and I'm curious too, you know, because, because we don't take that much risk and the gains are smaller. You know, it would be nice if we could look at more aggressive methods. And I, I wonder, how does that compare with how our budget grows every year and how our funding needs grow every year? Are, are we able to keep pace with how conservative we are with it or?
Well, right now, our interest rates are pretty high. So we've been doing pretty good this last, you know, fiscal year. I think our rate of return is four and a half, you know, five percent over the last 12 months. So we've been doing really well, keeping up better with inflation. You know, prior to this fiscal year, our, the rates weren't that great. And so, so we were falling behind if you want to compare it to, you know, what inflation has been recently. But again, our goal with our investments is to maintain those three: liquidity, safeguard, and a reasonable rate of return. Those are the top three priorities.
Okay. Thank you. And then my last set of questions is for item five for the Potter Valley project. With Chelsea still, there's Chelsea. You know, I, and I do appreciate the work you put in on this because I know you did a lot, and, and this is a very important project that's going to impact us greatly, you know? And so I'm, I'm kind of wondering with, with the letter that's supposed to go to the WAC meeting, what is, what is the ultimate goal of it or intent? Because it, as it's written, it's, it's a lot of good statements. It just, it doesn't have much teeth to it or, or push anybody or hold anybody accountable.
Yeah, thank you. So the intent of the statement of interest is really just to update to previous statements of intent or interest that both the Petaluma City Council and the Water Advisory Committee or the WAC adopted to guide Sonoma Water's role in both the Eel River Project Authority, ERPA, and also in the New Eel Russian Project. So the statement in consideration tonight is just a third version of the statement of interest that's borne out of the contractor's desire to formally remind Sonoma Water that the contractors, which include Petaluma, are not party to the water diversion agreement. And they look to Sonoma Water to act in their best interest. Some of the concerns the contractors have at this point are uncertainty over the costs and beneficiaries of the New Eel Russian Project. So this update, updated statement reaffirms support for some of the key principles in the water diversion agreement, which include continued diversions from the Eel River to the, to Lake, Lake Mendocino and restoration of the Eel River watershed, but also to advocate for fair cost allocation based on the benefits received. So the statement of interest doesn't have any real teeth to it, but it's more of a symbol of the collective voice of the contractors at this point. The project's at a really critical point with the Federal Energy Regulation Commission reviewing PG&E's application to decommission the Potter Valley facilities. So the WAC support of the updated statement at the upcoming November 4th WAC meeting will serve as a formal reminder to Sonoma Water that the contractors support the project, but they ask for transparency and, and fairness in any upcoming decisions that impact the contractors.
And then if anyone were to propose changes to that letter, would that have to be done through the WAC meeting?
It would, yes.
Okay. Because I, I'll bring it to the WAC meeting then, but in, in statement number two, where it talks about, you know, the, the new NERF facility is going to support the overall water reliability, that's not entirely true. And that's through Sonoma Water's own reporting and data, that, that the water supply is insufficient. And so I guess that will be the place then to talk about that.
Yeah, you can, yeah, speak to that on November 4th.
And I think that might be problematic in that the action tonight is to approve this and that you, as the representative at that meeting, represent our exact item. If you want to have a modification, now is the time to have that suggested that would give you that latitude at that meeting. Is there a particular thing you wish to add so that we can give you leeway on that?
Basically to, you know, I don't have it in a perfect statement, but, you know, NERF does not support, does not support water supply at the current level, and the amount of water that it's diverting will be a lot less than what we currently need. So if I'm allowed to go there with, with the basics of that statement, and then I'll bring more of the evidence from the report with me, I do it that way.
I, I would think that's broad, but I'd ask the staff for feedback on that proposed statement is, you know, is, there's a TAC as well?
There's a TAC, yeah.
The technical advisory committee, and they touched on these two items.
Yeah, so the, the diversions in the water diversion agreement are going to be substantially less from the Eel to Lake Sonoma. But without those diversions, Lake Sonoma storage would significantly decrease, and that would be very noticeable. One of the concerns from the contractors is that Lake Sonoma supports the Upper Russian River. And so that's one of the key questions in the statement of interest is, how is this diversion ultimately going to benefit those on the lower Russian River water supply, which is all of the water contractors?
Can I ask, are the concerns Councilmember DeCarli is raising, have they been discussed? And are they baked into the conversation at this point already?
They're in different terms, yes. So the contractors are more concerned with how the, the diversions, while they're smaller than, they will be smaller than they, what they were previously, how they're actually going to benefit the, the existing water contractors. So it's a different statement, but I think that, you know, the intent behind that concern is, is the same.
So perhaps I can mention it at the WAC meeting for the next iteration of the letter?
Yeah, I would think.
It's already gone through two hoops of approval.
Perfect. Yeah, right.
Okay. Thank you, Chelsea.
Thank you. I'd like to ask the clerk to open it up to our public comment period on the consent calendar, all seven items.
Yes, we did receive some comments ahead of the meeting, one on item five and two on item seven. And members of the public should bring their speaker card to my desk if they have not already done so. Speakers are reminded to be respectful in their comments and that this meeting is being translated. Please pause between sentences for translation. I do have two cards, if there's any others.
Our first speaker is Maureen Gottschall, to be followed by Nick Harris. And John Hunanea wants to see time, fill in a card and bring it on up.
Oh, it's three minutes. Oh, my goodness gracious, and I don't have to be nervous to get it all in. Okay. I'm asking you to establish, it's basically the same thing that I talked about in general comments. I'm asking to establish better standards for staff reports when they're proposing significant new financial authorities. The staff report for the bond 4.41, the staff report was three pages long. It establishes bonding authority that could commit the city to hundreds of millions of dollars in debt for the next 30 years. Yet it contains no financial analysis, no risk assessment, and no meaningful comparison of alternatives. The Government Finance Office Association, the leading professional organization, organization for municipal finances, publishes extensive best practices for debt management. GFPA recommends that government develop comprehensive debt management policies that include specific guidelines regarding debt structure, maximum terms, financial restrictions, and appropriate debt limits expressed as ratios used by credit analysis. GFPA also recommends that city conduct through financial analysis with professional municipal advisors before undertaking debt financing. This staff report provides none of the analysis, even though we're creating the mechanism to issue bonds, that must eventually comply with the GFPA standards. So let me be specific about what's missing. Financial analysis. The report states that there's no financial impact. That's only true for introducing the ordinance. But what is the debt capacity analysis? How much could we borrow? What, what would be the debt service be? What are the credit ratings impacts? GFPA best practice require this information. In 2021, we issued leave, we issued a lease revenue bonds for Measure U. This report mentions them in one sentence, but provides no comparison of terms or lessons learned. Fourth alternative, the report dismisses other finance, financing options in one sentence, possibly higher interest rates with zero data or quantifications. Before adopting this ordinance, requiring a supplemental staff report that meets GFPA best practices. Comprehensive debt management policy, capacity analysis, professional municipal advisory review, risk assessment, and real alternatives with an analysis with actual numbers. The taxpayers who approve Measure H deserves transparency, and you guys deserve complete information that meets professional standards.
Thank you. Nicholas Harris.
Hi, good evening, Mayor McDonald, Vice Mayor, and members of the council. As you know, my name is Nick Harris. I'm speaking tonight as Petaluma resident and taxpayer about the bond law, the proposed bond law. I respectfully ask the council to pause and reconsider adoption of this ordinance in its current form. This is not whether Petaluma should build, this is not about whether Petaluma should build a public safety facility or invest in public infrastructure. It's about how we finance these projects. As a little aside, I have some friends that live in Richmond. Richmond is paying for a hospital, they're paying for bonds on a hospital that no longer exists. I bring that up to highlight that bonds, they, they, it's an example of decisions that you are making, that you will be making in the near future, that are going to live on for very long. There's things that are going to happen. There's no reason for this body to remove process or to remove rights whenever you're making a decision that is extending 25 or 30 years into the future. At the October 6th meeting, the mayor asked the most honest question of the night, and thank you for that. What procedures and requirements does this law create or remove compared to state general law? The answer was that Chapter 4.41 bypasses state bonding rules because Petaluma is a charter city. That means you get to bypass the rules. That's all the answer said. It didn't answer. The question, it may sound routine, but what it really means is that the city intends to create its own private bond system that can operate, quote, "without regard to any other law." The staff report and discussion at the last meeting did nothing to advise what rights and protections for residents. This new bond law gives up, and it's an optional bond law. You can sell bonds, you could finance a public safety facility without this law. This is completely optional. Don't do it. Petaluma does not control the revenues backing these bonds. It's the Measure H countywide sales tax created by county voters and administered by the county under, of Sonoma, under state law. The city receives its share through a funding agreement with the county, and that agreement clearly says the city must bond those funds, quote, "as allowed by applicable law." Yet Chapter 4.41 claims the city may act, quote, "without regard to any other law." Those two positions cannot both be true, at least in a logical and sensical world. The legal world, I don't know. I'm not an attorney. Oh, second ago, okay. Those two positions cannot be true, especially when the law, when the city's law lacks state law safeguards for taxpayers. Sonoma County voters, if, if Sonoma County voters repeal Measure H, that revenue stream ends. That means this debt, that makes this debt intergovernmental, not purely municipal. And when bond repayments depend on regional revenues and state-administered collections, California courts have long held that state law governs because it is a matter of statewide concern. This ordinance removes the notice, protests, and judicial validation procedures that state This ordinance removes the notice, protests, and judicial validation procedures that state law requires for public debt. These aren't mere formalities, they're the processes that give residents transparency and recourse before their tax revenues are pledged. According to staff and the municipal advisor, Mr. Gortler, the financial benefit of circumventing these procedures amounts to roughly one quarter of 1% over 25 years, perhaps $100,000 to $200,000 in savings on a $55 million project. That's a rounding error in exchange for a permanent loss of public oversight on these bonds. That's what your yes vote enables. City staff said there's no risk to the general fund because bondholders bear the risk of Measure H repeal, but the city is both issuer and beneficiary of the debt. If revenues drop or the taxes repealed, investors will expect the city to protect its credit rating in, quote, "moral obligation." Future councils could feel pressure to divert general fund dollars to repay bonds that were supposed to be non-recourse. City attorney says that the law that you're going to enact won't allow that. We could change the law, that's what I'm saying, to pressure a future council to change the law out of guilt, essentially, whatever the moral, moving on. Prior councils were wise enough to leave the bonds that were, the bond laws that were created in 1982. They haven't been changed. Keep them that way. If council moves forward, it should require the changes detailed in my written public comment. In response to my letter today, the city attorney has cited City of Santa Monica versus Grubb as proof that Petaluma can do this under a charter, but in Grubb, Santa Monica issued water system bonds backed by its own local revenues and the lawsuit came after the city had already passed its bond ordinance. That case involved purely municipal funds under the city's complete control. I'm here today before you, before you enact Petaluma's bond law. That's the difference. Grubb didn't have a fighting chance. The city council there had already passed the law that stripped residents' rights. You have to do the right thing. You have to just move forward, not under this law. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have one more speaker, Tim Portius.
I think that the eighties council had nothing like what this council has. I think you guys are doing it correctly. I think that your legal counsel is quite good to follow. I think that all of you are doing a very good job, and I don't believe any of these other things that I've just heard, honestly. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That closes general, the public comment on the consent calendar, and I'll bring it back up to council. And remember, we are in two, we are items one through six and items separate seven, separately. And Councilmember Barnacle?
I'll move items one through, through six.
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Barnacle and a second by Now. May we have a roll call vote?
Barnacle?
Hi.
Kater Thompson?
Yes.
DeCarly?
Yes.
Now?
Yes.
Quint?
Yes.
Shribbs?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Barnacle?
I'll move item seven.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion by Barnacle and a second by Kater Thompson, and I think I want to weigh in that the public has heard on this and appreciate the, the input, and I know we've had a lot of dialogue, benefit of all, there's been a lot of dialogue and before the meeting with the public, and, and I, I think we have expert legal advice, we have expert bond advice, and we, at our last meeting, when we first introduced this, we covered many of the questions, they were drilled down upon in the dialogue, and so for me, I'm comfortable with being in support of, of the motion here. So, and Councilmember Shribbs?
I think we need to have a couple of questions that would like to get answered, as part of the commentary and discussion on this item.
Sure.
Okay, I think from what I'm hearing, I think for the transparency, that there's two questions that, that were raised that we just need to be very clear on. One question was, can we get a bond without this, without this 4.41? And what would be the difference between getting a bond with it and then without it? Just so we're clear on, on why we're doing this. That's the first question.
So the short answer to the first part is yes, and if we did not have this ordinance, then we would be issuing essentially a lease revenue bond that would involve, as I think we discussed last time, a lease, leaseback arrangement between the City of Petaluma and the Petaluma Financing Authority, which is more similar to the 2021 lease revenue bonds that we issued. That is a slightly more complicated structure that may generate higher interest rates because of that additional complexity.
Right, so the additional cost to that process, if we did it that way, is it, are we talking about a small little amount, a couple of thousand dollars, or are we talking about a million dollars?
I would need Stephen to probably come up and address that. I, I think we were talking about 25 basis points, roughly speaking on the rate the last time this was before you, but if we have any more specifics.
Hi, my name is Stephen Gortler, I'm a consultant working with the city on their bond issues, been working with the city for many years. Maybe I can just quickly address one or two of the points that were raised. First, with regards to the risk to the city's general fund, that point was raised several times. Is this ordinance something that could potentially expose the city to risk to its finances to the general fund? There's nothing in the ordinance that could do that. It very clearly states, excuse me, that the authority granted to the city under the ordinance is only to issue bonds secured by and payable from Measure H revenues. There's nothing in the ordinance that would ever allow the general fund to be attached to pay the debt back. And even if you didn't do the ordinance and you did a different type of financing secured by your Measure H revenues, it would be the same exact exposure to risk. There is no risk to the general fund. The city would never allow its general fund to be exposed to that kind of risk. No city would, and that's why these bonds are, they're well understood in the marketplace. They're secured by the revenues and nothing more. Excuse me. Also, it's worth mentioning, you've got two and a half times the debt service coverage on the debt, so for every dollar worth of annual debt service, you've got two and a half dollars of Measure H revenues to pay that debt. So the Measure H revenues would have to decrease by more than half before it would ever run into a default situation anyway. So we're being very cautious in making sure that there's no risk to the general fund. Quickly, one or two other things, excuse me, I'm a little congested. You know, in the course of doing a large financing, $50 million, you know, a number of bond issues and so forth, we are always looking for opportunities to save the city money. You know, this ordinance is one of a dozen things we're doing to save the city $100,000 or $200,000. You know, millions of dollars are being saved all across the spectrum of financing, legal, things that we're trying to do without running into all the details. That's all we do, really. All we really do is look for ways to do this at lower cost to the city. That's the, that's why we're hired. So, you know, we're doing this little ordinance in order to save the city some money. It's really no more complicated than that. There's a lot of misunderstanding, perhaps we could have done a better job of explaining it at the outset to alleviate some of these concerns, but we're not trying to do anything that, that you wouldn't want us to do. Additionally, the, the ordinance does not approve the issuance of any bonds, it merely grants the authority to issue bonds. So under this ordinance, if in fact the city were to issue bonds in the future, in a month or six months or a year, the staff would have to come back to the city council and say, "we would like to issue some bonds, and here are the kinds of bonds we'd issue, here's why we want to issue these bonds," and then all of the, the good government, GFOA debt management, good practices that were spoken to by the earlier speaker, all of those criteria would then be enumerated in the, in the request to authorize the issuance of the bonds. How much debt, how much coverage, what's the term, what's the interest rate, what's the cost? All of those things would have to come back to you for your approval before they could be issued into the, the bonds. This ordinance merely allows the staff to come back to you in the future and say, "we'd like to issue some bonds, will you approve these or not?" And then you might poke holes in them, say, "this is too big, this is too fast, this is too high, this is too low," and you might find fault with the bond issue and, and modify it to your liking, but this isn't that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the second question I had, just for clarity, is that this ordinance is fairly specific to what we're doing with the Measure H funds and is not going to be used or can't be used for anything, any other situations. This is very specific. We're not making a new law that's going to be used by us for other things other than this.
That's right. Stephen just alluded to that also. It's expressly provided in, in the ordinance that it only relates to the bonding of Measure H proceeds.
Good, I just want to make sure that that is clear. Okay, with that, I'd like, I would move to vote then.
But that's in numerous sections in the ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. So we have a motion from, did you make that a motion? Yes? And do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Shribbs and second by Now. May we have a roll call vote?
Barnacle?
Hi.
Kater Thompson?
Yes.
DeCarly?
Yes.
Now?
Yes.
Quint?
Yes.
Shribbs?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much. Appreciate staff's help in getting us to that point. Appreciate your attendance tonight. And that moves us to item eight, which is public hearing, matter for consideration. It's a resolution advising the public on the council's view of a proposed recall. And I think I'll be leading on that. And you see in your packet a staff memo and you see a resolution numerating what my thoughts were generally, but more specifically, and I think as the public has pointed out to us here tonight, it is the mayor's job to try and pull things together, show a little leadership, and that's how I view my efforts in this. I put together my thoughts on the recall, and as mayor, I do have responsibilities to the council and to you, the public, to provide a context on all of what we see going on. And absolutely, a recall is a legal right of the voters, and what you'll see in the memo is it says that, that generally speaking, there's a trust placed on the voters to know when a recall is warranted and why. So you, you've seen the documents we've pulled together, and I'd like to look up and down the council dials and see if anyone has any questions of the item. My bad, can I ask if you wish to recuse?
Yes, I do wish to recuse.
Okay, I got busy there, didn't I?
Yes, you did, you jumped the gun.
All right. So you may be recused. And I appreciate everybody's poison not jumping in with questions before we got to that element there. So now, let me rephrase that again. Do we have any questions from the dials? Not?
Do the rest of us need to recuse because we sit within 500 feet?
There's an awful lot of recusal going on in, you know, every other council meeting, it seems, isn't there? So now, I'd like the clerk to open it to.
I just have a quick question for you.
Oh, you do? Okay, there we go.
Just to clarify what you just said, to be clear, that you were writing this as, as your statements, this was not a staff-written thing, it was a mayor-written thing?
I pulled together an outline, staff did all the, the heavy lifting and putting it in paper and process.
But basically, it's, it's your, your concept and your work on this.
That's right.
Because I just wanted to make that clear, that you're, you're trying to do this. It's not coming from staff, it's coming from the mayor and with us.
No, this is definitely me.
Appreciate the leadership, thank you.
Okay. You're welcome. And back to the clerk for a public comment.
We did receive four comments on this item, and those are posted online, and members of the public should bring their speaker cards to my desk if they have not already done so. Speakers are reminded to be respectful in their comments and that this meeting is being translated. Please pause between sentences for translation. I do have, I believe, five cards, if there's any others.
Our first speaker tonight will be Janice Barker, to be followed by Jody Johnson.
Hello, Mayor, City staff, and community. We speak tonight on Agenda Item Eight for the greater good of our entire community, not just District One. For the record, we understand that residents have a right to bring forth a recall petition and potentially a recall election, and for the record, we acknowledge that some of the residents feel wronged by votes, words, or positions by our city council members. That has and will continue to happen in every city council and county and every meeting by our, held by our elected officials. There has never been an election where 100% of the residents vote for just one city council member. Elections are about votes, and whoever receives the majority of the votes wins the election. We take position of no on the recall, as there has been no ethical, legal, or legal violations ascertained by a third-party unbiased oversight committee. If Petaluma begins this type of recall process now, every single city council member would be recalled or at least petitioned against in a recall process. Notably, though, for District One, there is only one year left on a four-year term for our District One councilwoman. As stated here, even if 25% of the registered District One residents signed for a recall election, it would not happen until June 20, June of '26, just four and a half months before the District One election. Any resident, as any resident contemplates the cost, the intent, and the why, it simply doesn't rise to egregious or ethical reasons, but based on, "I don't like this person, I don't like the comments made, or I don't like the votes, I don't like her," that boundary and civility is being crossed and not supporting, not supporting an electoral vote of 69%, that placed her in the position in the first place. Would, could, place all city council members everywhere in the crosshairs of suppression and considerable debate. We have had issues with city council member votes that went against everything we represent, but we would not seek revenge or harm or removal based on their city council position. If there were illegal or ethical violations, we might take a different stance. This feeling, this feels personal versus necessary. Irony of this is that non-District One disgruntled resident is leading, leading the charge. This disgruntled resident does not have a vote in the potential recall election, nor have a signature allowed.
Thank you very much. Jody Johnson, to be followed by Ivan Orano.
Tonight, we would be standing up against this and for this resolution regardless of what district this was happening in. Intent matters, integrity matters, and most important, District One residents, many who do not involve themselves in day-to-day city government, should at the least be given factual information to be able to make a thoughtful choice as to whether to sign a petition or not. This resolution won't protect potential District One residents from being given skewed misinformation at their doors, but our hope for our community is that we don't pursue recalls without violations as a means to seek revenge. Intent matters, the why matters, the cost of time and taxpayer money matter, no recall. And to add to this, we have sat in so many city council members' meetings, and we've actually heard just about everything, the disagreements, the people having difference of opinions. That's what life is about, that, that's That's what life is about. That's what democracy is about. But we don't take out everybody that doesn't agree with us in some sort of a path that doesn't make sense. This doesn't make sense, not only for our district council member that represents us, but for every one of you who has stood up for us. I don't even speak tonight as a mobile home resident. I speak as a resident of Petaluma. We can't start this process this way. This doesn't make sense. Thank you.
Thank you. Ivan Arano, to be followed by Bert Boda.
Thank you, Mayor. I left on how city council member Mrs. Thompson uses resources from the city as a way to intimidate, harass, and try to get away with abuse of power. I have many, many examples of how she has harassed me. All the neighborhood knows she has a beef against me. I'm a public servant, too, for the County Alameda. I don't know what to say, to the point that she harassed my girlfriend once when she was walking on the sidewalk in front of her house to get to my house. It was disturbing. For the past 19 years, I noticed that the harassment intensifies when she's part of this board. So I've never been here. I don't care about the recall. I have no beef with that. I hope she stays. I won't legal actions against her. I need an investigation. I'm willing to provide all the evidence, reports from the city code enforcements, how they got away with things, how they charged me illegally, how they go after. My fence that I built with my neighbor, he left to Georgia, and another neighbor came. The funny thing is that I got a call from the city enforcement twice, two different neighbors. Those are Caucasians. And I'm the only one who got the call about that I have to turn down my fence because it doesn't meet the size regulations. When I went and measured her fence, it meets the same size as my fence. So the abuse of power is disturbing. So I'll be contacting a detective in the city of Petaluma. Hopefully, they help. And I hope all of you participate in this case. Disturbing when any citizen goes to your backyard and without announcements trespass your property. I don't think any of you would like any residents in Petaluma to enter your property and start taking pictures just because. Before they came, I did a fumigation, and I have to remove all my plants. That was the crime for the city to come in abuse. Thank you.
Thank you. Bert Boda, to be followed by Angie Cruz.
Mr. Mayor and council members, this is a testament to Janice Kater Thompson's advocacy for senior citizens. Janice Kater Thompson has been advocating for those of us living in Youngstown Mobile Home Park against park managers, park managers who have the people skills similar to those being passed over to be hired for a penitentiary warden position. Janice hasn't just advocated for us. She's been our shield against managers who mistake intimidation for leadership and contempt for communication. She shows up when it matters most. She listens when we feel invisible. She's transformed our individual grievances into a collective voice that demands respect and fair treatment. Where management has wielded policies like weapons, Janice has wielded the law like a lifeline. Too many mobile home park residents across this country live under the thumb of managers who view basic dignity as a privilege rather than a right. Janice understands that our homes, however humble, are still our homes, and we deserve to be treated as valued community members, not inmates to be controlled. Her advocacy has given us something we'd almost lost: hope. Hope that someone with power actually cares. Hope that change is possible. Hope that we don't have to accept being treated like we're doing time rather than simply living our lives. Janice Kater Thompson hasn't just been effective. She's been essential, and we're grateful beyond measure. We love her, and we need her. Petaluma loves her, and we need her. Thank you.
Thank you. Angie Cruz, to be followed by Dwayne Bellinger.
Earlier in this city council meeting, city council member Quint made the metaphor of doing Little League and being an umpire, and 50% of the people were always in disagreement. And although that's a small example and not comparable at all, I think that that really shows to, right, like any of us and any of you are going to have people that disagree with you, that don't see your point of view, or that just don't like you as a person. This does feel personal, as others have mentioned, and I think that in a lot of parts in this nation, a lot of the things that are occurring feel very personal. And I think Petaluma is so much better than that, and that that should not be a waste of resources, time, staff, et cetera, for something that, right, in a year, she, District 1, will have a reelection. When we argue about water and everything else that we do at every city council meeting, everyone has a difference in opinion, but one of the main things that people agree on is that they don't want to waste time, resources, money, all of that jazz. And this is very evident that it's a waste of all those resources. So I think that it's very clear, aside from the support that Janice gives to her constituents who voted for her, and that this recall is coming from somebody outside of that district. I mean, I think that speaks for itself. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Dwayne Bellinger, to be followed by Tim Portius.
Good evening. Thank each and every one of you for the time you put in on the council. It's a lot of effort. I did want to say about the recall process. It was adopted in 1911 as a result of the corruption in Sacramento by the Southern Pacific Company. They were able to charge farmers for hauling their grain more than the farmers made on the grain. That is, you work your life off, and you build a bushel of grain to the railroad. Why does it charge you more? Anyway, the corruption by the Southern Pacific Railroad of each and every member of our legislature was, the people got so disgusted, they passed the recall process. And it was established to, as a warning to the corrupt people, not that they, it was not established to give a second chance to poor losers in an election. It was established to warn corrupt people to stay out of our government. And there's been no accusations here. We've got corrupt Supreme Court in Washington, but locally in the government here, we've got honest people running our place. I think to use the recall process for other than corruption is not only to waste the public's money, but it is basically to steal the thunder of a process that was designed to fight corruption. And that belittling of corruption is just exactly what we don't need nowadays. Thank you.
Thank you. Tim Portius, to be followed by David Saul.
I have always believed, after I began to get to know how Janice Kater Thompson actually gives to her district. I am one of those people. I can't see that an outsider like this can push this kind of a thing forward. He's even threatened seated council. This cannot be done. It's not a reasonable thing. It's not okay. It's not a fair thing. You don't see any of us coming up here and giving you hellion or saying not to vote for you. That's not that. I believe in every one of you here. You guys have been doing great. I've appreciated all of your efforts. Every time when you show up, we see you, we feel it. And it's really good to know that this council has been showing up many times, and we want you to keep doing that. And we want this council. You know, there are people that we have that have elderly speech impediments. They have a really hard time in their lives. You could, I wanted to bring some here, but they won't. They're embarrassed. It's sad because you need to hear the voices of the people that are really being affected out here. Janice does. Janice goes there. She's speaking with them. You have spoken with them. You guys have spoken with them. Thank you. You pay attention to us. You've been listening to us. You are seeing some of the things that is unbelievable that some people would do to other people in our own society. It's unreal. It's horrendously bad. But you guys, you're the ones. You've been standing up for us. She has. And none of you needs a recall. There's nothing broken. There's no law. There's no reason. It's not realistic. Please stop it if you can. Thank you.
Thank you. David Saul, to be followed by Catherine Babowski.
Okay, take two.
Thanks for waiting.
It's what you get for coming here late. Good evening. I'll be brief, since others have, before me, have addressed this agenda item quite eloquently. Disagreeing or disliking a candidate for elected office is perfectly fine. It's a good basis for not voting for them or for campaigning against them even. But it's not a valid basis for the recall of an elected official. Recalls are part of our democracy, but are only appropriate when there has been proven wrongdoing on the part of the elected official, where they have abused their duties of office and violated their sworn oath of office. Without such wrongdoing being demonstrated, a recall is nothing more than an attempt to silence someone with whom the supporters of the recall disagree. And I also want to chime in here and express my appreciation to all of the members of the city council, who I believe are getting paid something like $5 per meeting to do your job here. I've met with most of you one-on-one on issues that are important to me, and I've found you all to be very responsible in your, carrying out of your duties, and have been very accessible, including Councilwoman Kater Thompson. I don't think you're generally acknowledged and appreciated enough for the work you do. And unless proven otherwise, all council members deserve the presumption that you are acting in the best interests of Petaluma in good faith and to the best of your abilities. Thank you.
Thank you. Catherine Babowski.
Yes, I just wanted to say, too, Janice Thompson has done nothing wrong. She's done everything right. She sees what's going on on the corrupt landlords and park owners at Harmony and Capri and Youngstown. And she's done a lot for the city of Petaluma. There should be no recall on Janice Thompson.
Thank you very much. That was our last speaker, and that closes general public When I close public comment?
I'm waiting.
And so this council grants you your three minutes at this time.
Six minutes. I have two cards.
And who's the second card from? Do you have a name on the second card?
Six of all.
I'm sorry. Since I'm not familiar with the party, can I get away from who's, there you go. Thank you very much.
Good evening. I heard so much from people who spoke before me, but I wonder how many people actually are familiar with the process and the democracy. Okay? This whole recall is within the process of democracy. It's within the Secretary of State. Anybody can go on the handbook and read it all. Now, I hear people talk about she didn't do anything wrong. We all remember some of the ladies who sit in behind me, one of them is not here, on August 4th, where they read made-up story, where Janice Kater Thompson put somebody in a very bad position. The letter of intent, there's only three people had the name of that young lady: myself, Caitlin, Janice Kater Thompson. How did the lady behind me get her name? But you heard what they said. They tried to discredit me. So if you go to page one, this is on August 5th, the young ladies respond. I never shared it because I kept giving them the opportunity time after time to come clean. Okay? After they came into the store, they went to aisle six. Okay, so that's when she told me that since I signed that paper, it makes me the leader at the city council, and I need to go to city meeting. I did not know that, what I was getting into. And she started telling me about how I can be a target to other people if I'm going against the lady that you want to go against. That's somewhat of what I remember. That's when she told me that she didn't want me to really be in this chaos. This was better for me just to re-sign my name off the city council just for my safety. The two women that went to see her, Jody Johnson and Kay Pollin, and they made her very, very uncomfortable. Mr. Schips is right there. I invited him to go speak with that lady because I can ask some of you. I can get Mrs. Now to be involved. Definitely, I'm not getting Mr. DeCarly involved in this. And he's right there. He declined to go. Let's talk about, let's talk about April 21st. Okay, April 21st. You remember the meltdown? When she said people said bad things about her parents? Well, here's the transcript of everything that was been on social media. The young lady by Jody Potak, if I'm pronouncing the name right, she have anything to do with the Kater Farm subdivision, Eastside, question mark. Maria Lomans responded to her, literally was just thinking that. Jody's respond, okay, to her, and they sold a prime farmland for housing. Steve Colatini, Maria, he responded to Maria Lomans, relevance, question mark. Larry Sartori responded to Jody. I believe Art Kater Thompson was her father. Okay? Linda Gallagher, he was a nice man. That's what she claimed about people saying bad things about her. Elizabeth Kenro, Larry Sartori, we used to get our eggs from him, and he was give me and my brother sesame seed candy. Angela DeCarly responded to Jody with the first question, yes. Then Janice Kater Thompson respond, attacking my parents is not cool. That's her meltdown in April 21st. But let's talk about attacking- But let's talk about attacking people. She attacked three business owners, not one, the Vine and Barrel, the place next to it, the Turkish restaurant, because they didn't agree with her. She's calling people late at night, criticizing the PHA, attacking me. Kevin, the young lady who's sitting in the back, Maureen, did she file a complaint with you regarding Janice trying to contact her past midnight? You were in communication with Maureen, but you said you talked to her. Any of you, including the city attorney, do you have anything to show that she got reprimanded for all her bad behavior, calling people names? What she did on April 21st, calling young lady terrorist, and she trying to link her to Mr. DeCarly being his girlfriend? Who does that? Any of you who was gonna support this, shame on you. This is the process is taking place. If other community member, they want to recall some of you, what are you gonna do? Because you want to take their rights away? So Janice has been misbehaved. She's unfit and fit to be a city council member. Even if you have cancer, do you say, wait, we got six months to go? No, you don't. If you have a broken leg, you say, oh, I'm gonna wait another six months? No, you don't. You need to not be involved in this. You can give your opinion, and that's that. Okay? Nobody's gonna hold you to it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. That was our last speaker for the public comment period on the item. Bring it back to council. Anyone have any thoughts on council or council member Barnacle?
Yeah. It is part of the process. And we gotta defeat it because this is clearly an intimidation and tactic for people. That's what the purpose is. You've made it clear. You've come up here, you know, you just talked about all the wrongdoing that Janice has done and the things that she said. I don't think you have those kinds of records on me, but you've threatened to recall on me. You've threatened to recall on Frank. You've threatened to recall on our mayor. None of us have made any sort of bombastic claims. You're trying to intimidate people. And personally, myself, I'm not gonna be bullied. I'm gonna speak, I'm gonna do what I think's best for the community. I'm gonna continue to listen to people, and I'm, you know, I believe in our community. I believe in the future of our community, and I believe our community is better than petty recalls. And that's what this is. So I'm happy to support it. Thank you for bringing it forward, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for supporting it, council member Now, and I hope that we all agree with it because the bar to be to have this done is pretty dang low. If someone who gets 69% of the vote, you know, it's very possible she could be recalled months before her election. There's just no logical, no logical reason for this, and there's definitely the purpose of this is to chill council members from voting how they want. And I know I'm not gonna start deciding how I vote based on whatever the next door poll says I should. So thank you.
Thank you. Was that in the form of a motion?
I'm happy to move this item.
Thank you. Looking for a second or comments? A raised hand would be a, we're all getting too subtle.
Well, I have comments when you get a moment.
We're at comments, and so just raise your hand, and I'll call the comments. So council member DeCarly.
You want me to go first?
Wait, council member DeCarly.
So I'll just say, you know, in general, I believe this sort of thing is best left to regular elections whenever possible. But if the community doesn't feel we're leading by example, they do have the right to exercise that and the right to be heard. And I don't believe that this is something that we as a council should be making an opinion on, and we have the public process for a reason. But I want us to act and move forward as a unified body. And so, you know, because we are here first and foremost to take care of our city without, you know, without, you know, anything else personal, and so I think the most neutral stance tonight is to vote yes, because I don't believe in making it a personal matter. You know, personal matters are not why I'm here certainly, and so that's how I feel about it.
Thank you. Council member Quint.
Thank you. I just want to take a moment to express my support for council member Kater Thompson. I believe that Janice has served the community with integrity, care, and steady commitment. As I understand it, the issue outlined in the recall effort revolves around transparency, and anyone who knows Janice will tell you that she is the most transparent person they know. She will tell you exactly what she thinks, and there's no harm in that. I believe the current recall effort is about, it's not about misconduct or malfeasance or lack of transparency. I think it's about disagreement on policy, and that, I believe that's not what recalls are for. Our systems are designed to let voters express those differences through regular elections, not through costly and divisive recall campaigns that distract us from the work that we're trying to do. I'd also, lastly, you know, I just want to say, I for one welcome varying points of view in our governing body. When council members advocate for positions that are different than mine, it helps me to think about those issues from a different perspective, and it's that type of introspection that allows me to continue to grow as a person. So, you know, it's that, it's those different points of views that I think can make us a stronger and better servants for the community. So that's my perspective. Thank you.
Thank you. Council member Shrib.
Yeah, I pretty much agree with what's been said so far, so I'm not gonna repeat any of that. So just to add to that, for what this resolution is, what it says, and a little bit about the process, what we're actually doing, what is this resolution all really about and what it says? So I want to mention, talk about that a little bit. But I do agree, yes, recalls, it's all can be done, but at this time, from a practical point of view, it took, takes at least a year for somebody to even learn the basics of all the machinery that gets voted on. So the timing is a little bit off, for sure. The cost, there's a cost to it, and disruption to the staff as well, because we need to keep the staff focused. We're under enough pressure right now, huge pressure from federal government and actions that are going on as well as other things. So that's happening. This resolution does not say that council member Kater Thompson is correct. It doesn't say that she is doing a phenomenal job. We totally agree with everything she says. It's nothing to do about that. It's just about, this recall at this time is inefficient. It is costly, and really doesn't, and whatever, the outcome of that is, yes, someone will come in and say it works, and she gets voted out, then a replacement. It's gonna be disruptive to the council processes at this time, and election time is the right time to do this. So if you disagree, yes, I would say councilman Kater Thompson is very passionate and very opinionated. Hey, that's great. That's what we need sometimes, and we need to have that point of view. And so, yes, did she step over the line once or twice? Yes, we can actually, I think we can agree, yes, there has been a few steps across the line, but nothing to warrant what's happening with this recall. So, yes, there's corrections that get made, but we all are human. We all make mistakes, and we move forward. Let's forgive, forget, but we also improve and use these as lessons that all of us can use to make ourselves all better and continue on, and let's get this job. We need to get this job done. We have a general plan that's coming up that we need to get done before the, even before election time comes in, and we really need to focus in on that. We need a strong force, and Councilman Thompson is supporting, there's battle war going on right now with the marble, mobile home parks that we need to resolve. Hopefully, we can find some resolution as soon as possible, but we're heavily engaged in so many things right now. We need Councilmember Kater Thompson to support this team to move all the things that we're moving right now. And so I just want to support Janice in everything that she's trying to do for us here, for the public and for her district. But I want to move forward, and I just want to do it in an efficient, practical manner. Let's admit our faults, and let's move forward, and let's forgive, forget, and move on. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
And thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, council members, that you said a lot of what I would have said. Council members and the mayor were held to a higher standard than any elected official is or someone in administrative position like our city manager or city attorney. And, but we are human, and we will make mistakes, and we will learn from those mistakes, and hopefully, they're not repeated. We've all been known to not be perfect. And I don't agree with everyone on this dais, but I really respect the work they put into the job of being on the council and our mayor. And 20 years ago, I was on a council, and my fellow council members didn't agree with what I was trying to do. Get approved in the city, a Target shopping center and a Friedman shopping center, and I had a very strong opinion about things, and they found someone to run against me. And that's what our elections are about. So I didn't get reelected. I think I lost by like 400 votes. But now I am a better council member because I know I can be removed by either not being reelected and not getting the support of my council members when I do go up for reelection, or there's a District 3 neighbor who might not like how I do my job up here, and they decide to recall me, and it wouldn't take long much. But a recall and voting that's expressing your opinions, and we have that right. But we have to remember that the people that sit up here are not perfect, and we will make mistakes, and we will have public meltdowns, hopefully not too public, and that our behavior in public reflects on all of us. So if one council member, the mayor, does something, we all feel that, and we all feel like, okay, we can do better. But I don't approve of a recall at this time. It's too close to the election, and it is costly, and our staff time, and it's very important that we keep staff doing the city's job and the work, and, but that's why we have elections. So this resolution will not stop the recall from being on the ballot, and I will support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Did that come in the measure of a second for the motion we have on the floor?
That can be a second.
Okay, so we have motion by Barnacle and second by Now, and I'd just like to read out the last line of the resolution, which reads, "The council is not aware of any misconduct by any council member that would warrant engaging in the recall process and disrupting the city's work, especially so close to the regular election." That's the text that we're voting on here tonight. So with that, I'd like to have a roll call vote, please.
Barnacle?
Aye.
Kater Thompson is recused. DeCarly?
Yes.
Now?
Yes.
Quint?
Yes.
Shribbs?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
May I ask that we invite our council member back into the chambers? And that brings us to item nine on the agenda, for which I invite our planning team and our project team and like the whole football team up to the, and we will take a five-minute section recess while we reload the deck up here, okay? So we got five minutes to pull together. All right, let's bring the council back into order. Thank you for all the stalwarts who've stayed with us to this exciting item. And let me read the titling on that. It's the public hearing and consider recommendations to approve conditional use permits for the proposed Petaluma Public Safety Facility with major telecommunications facility for emergency response communications and approve site plan and architectural review, SPAR, for the proposed development. plan and architectural review, SPAR, uh, for the proposed development of a public safety facility on a three and a half acre parcel of the city fairgrounds property located at eight six six East Washington Street, et cetera. And, um, leading off, it is our community development director, Brian O., with, um, Mike Janusak, senior planner. And, um, also we have him with us, the project team of Paul Gohegan, project manager, Chief Miller, uh, Brian Miller, and Chief Jeff Shock of Police and Fire. So thank you all and take it away.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, exciting project indeed. Uh, this is, uh, the first, uh, city facility since Ellis Creek came online in oh nine. Um, it's a generational project. Um, we've done, um, a lot of, uh, work to get to this point. Um, there's been, we're really looking forward to walking through some of the changes, uh, since the study session that we had, uh, between both the city council and planning commission, uh, which, uh, was later, um, at the end of the summer of this year. Uh, since then, we've looked at a new design, which we're really excited to walk the council through this evening. If you haven't gotten a preview already, through some of the city communications. Um, and so to the mayor's point, there's, we have the full team here, both on the staff side and the consulting side. Um, and we come back to you with a, uh, recommendation, uh, and full support of our planning commission. There was, um, a lot of, uh, really thoughtful feedback, um, at that meeting that we've since incorporated. Um, and so the heavy lift, uh, to talk through the entitlements, what's before you. I will now turn it over to Mike Janusak, our senior planner, as well as Andrew Triple, our planning manager.
Thank you, Director O., and good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Mike Janusak. I'm a senior planner consulting with M Group. I'm here to present the staff report for the public safety facility, CUP and SPAR. This is file number PLPJ 2025 0041. An overview of my presentation this evening. I'll give some background and history, uh, go through the scope of work, recap the public meetings to date, uh, provide a summary of public outreach, uh, go through the standards of review and, and give staff's findings and provide staff's recommendation. Um, please recall the site location. It's at the corner of Kennelworth and Johnson. It's a 3.5 acre portion of the larger fairgrounds property, um, which is 48 acres on this particular tax lot. Uh, there, uh, is a, the existing condition is surface parking, a combination both paved and unpaved. And, um, there's currently no, um, public sidewalk on the project frontage. And there are 29 existing street trees within the public rights of way. The existing general plan land use designations in the purple, you have mixed use and in the light blue is public semi-public. And the implementing zoning districts for those designations are again in purple, mixed use one B and in blue, uh, civic facility. Um, there's also the fairgrounds overlay zone is shown the hatching. And I'd like to note, uh, the purpose and intent of the fairgrounds overlay zone is to provide specifications for establishment of new beneficial uses of the fairgrounds consisting with the guiding principles adopted in city council resolution 2022 167 and to ensure the ongoing operation of the site and its uses is in the best interest of the public health, safety and welfare while a master plan and associated land use policies and zoning are prepared and adopted for the fairgrounds property. Uh, I'd also like to note regarding the zoning, two more items. Um, the, uh, the use of public civic facility is allowed by right in both base zones, both the civic facility zone and the ME one B zone. Um, but for the overlay zone, it would, it would not require a conditional use permit, but since the overlay zone does apply, um, we are bringing forward the, the CUP. Um, also the civic facility zone does not have any development standards. It adopts the abutting district's development standards and so staff applied the ME one B development standards to the project. Uh, an overview of the required entitlements. Um, there are four permits before you this evening. Uh, there are two for the facility itself and then two for the, um, the proposed monopole for emergency response communications. So starting with the facility, uh, because it's in the overlay, it requires the CUP. Uh, also as a new public building, uh, chapter, ISO chapter 24 requires a major SPAR. Um, there's also another requirement in the overlay zone that requires, uh, a major SPAR for major site improvements within the overlay. So there's your, your CUP and your, your SPAR for the facility. And then the associated, uh, emergency response communications equipment. There's a proposed 76-foot monopole with eight antennas. And the way, uh, Petaluma Municipal Code, Chapter 1444 defines, um, telecommunications towers, uh, anything over 70 feet and more than three antennas requires, is, is defined by the code as a major, uh, telecommunications facility. And as such, uh, that associated equipment requires, um, a additional CUP and an additional SPAR. All four permits are bundled, uh, with this application and there are two resolutions, uh, before you this evening. Attachment one is for the conditional use permits and attachment two is for the site plan and architectural review. Uh, scope of work for the CUP. It'd be a 24/7 public safety services facility. Uh, at peak hour shift, there'd be 90 employees. There's roughly 10,000 square feet for police, 15,000 square feet for fire and 18,000 square feet of shared areas, including the emergency operations center. As far as the operations of the monopole, there's not a whole lot to note. Um, the, um, so power supply and supporting equipment would be fully contained within the proposed accessory structure. Um, and that monopole, um, would replace the existing communications towers at Fire Station One, as well as the existing police department on Petaluma Boulevard North. For site plan and architectural review, uh, these are the major, uh, components of that scope. I'll go ahead and skip to, um, site plans, so I can show you where these items are at. Here, if you follow my cursor, is, uh, the primary structure. It's roughly 44,000 square feet. There are four fire apparatus bays. There's also the support building. The accessory structure is, uh, 14 feet tall and 3,800 square feet in area. Um, there would be 19,000 square feet of landscaping proposed predominantly in the front of the site and along the Kennelworth Drive frontage. There would be 17 trees proposed, uh, primarily in that public parking area, uh, but there's also six additional trees in the secured lot. Um, that's one of the, the project revisions that have occurred, um, through the process. The monopole would be sighted here in the secured lot. It's roughly, uh, 80 feet from Kennelworth and 70 feet from the rear elevation of the primary structure. There'd be a 10-foot wide multipurpose path along, that wraps around the project frontage. And the front of the building would have, um, uh, in the public parking area, there'd be a plaza integrated, um, into the front of the building. Uh, here's the floor plan. Um, because planning, uh, primarily govern, uh, regulates the exterior of the building and the site work, I won't get into too much detail. Uh, here, here's the fire apparatus bay. Um, the first floor would contain the emergency operations center and a lot of the, uh, police operations. While the second floor, um, would have the firefighter dorms, um, and other, um, other programming. Here's the building elevation. Um, I won't get into too much detail because the architect is in attendance this, uh, this evening. And you'll note, um, at the far end, it's, it's sort of faint from this, uh, perspective, but the fire apparatus bay is now shown in a darker color tone while the police department has a lighter color tone. Um, also the primary finish material has, uh, been revised from the corrugated formcast concrete finish to a board form concrete finish. Here's a rendering of the 76-foot monopole. Uh, the code requires us to measure it, uh, to the tip of the tower, uh, tip of the antenna, rather. And, um, it's also a tapered, uh, design, which would, as the height increases, uh, it would ha, reduce the, uh, visual impact. A recap of the public meetings thus far. Uh, if you recall, there was a joint study session on August 4th with council and planning commission. Um, and I'd like to, uh, report back on the feedback that staff and the applicant heard from the review authorities at that meeting in terms of architectural direction and civic presence. Uh, as I mentioned, the primary finish material has changed from the corrugated metal formcast to the board form concrete. This provides a softer, natural wood grain texture. Uh, also the differentiation of the color tones that I highlighted previously. Public art, no specific feedback was offered. Uh, the staff report includes an implementation strategy that details how the project would comply with ISO chapter 18. Um, there's also locational opportunities identified in that section. Site layout and connectivity, this is just a refresher that the project does not propose parking and at the front of the site, which is, uh, the best practice from an urban design perspective. Um, there's nothing in the code that prohibits placement of parking, um, in, for this project site because there's no required front yard in the ME one B. The project still continues to have the 10-foot wide multipurpose path and the community plaza in front of the building. There's also been a revision to include, uh, pavers in, um, that area as well. Interior parking lot landscaping, uh, there is a development standard, um, of one landscape divider strip for every eight vehicle stalls. This standard is not met in the secured lot, uh, behind the building. Um, the, um, there's an operational constraint in wanting to enhance maneuverability and response times. And so, um, the standard also, uh, provides relief where the review authorities can consider alternative designs. So, uh, effectively if the project plans, uh, as they're proposed, uh, without these, um, without the standard being met, um, is approved this evening, the review authority will effectively be, um, waiving this development standard. Uh, there has been an additional six trees, uh, sighted up, uh, within the secured lot, but there's still not the, um, the standard's still not met. There's not one for every eight, uh, vehicle stalls or one landscape strip regardless of whether there's a tree, uh, planted or not. Uh, the tree requirement is another standard that's not met. Uh, you'll see in your resolution tonight that COA 13, uh, requires, uh, the remaining, uh, trees to be planted elsewhere on the city fairgrounds property. Uh, the onsite tree requirement is, uh, 58 and 17, uh, onsite trees are provided. The operational constraint in this case is that, uh, planting perimeter trees along the security fencing would facilitate climbing over the fence and present a security concern. Um, there's also a broader discussion on landscaping at the study session, um, that has resulted in, uh, curvilinear planting patterns, um, near the Kennelworth, uh, primarily near the Kennelworth frontage. And this effectively helps offset the rectangular forms of the building. The item was taken forward at, uh, to the planning commission at the regular hearing, the regular meeting at, uh, excuse me, on September 23rd. The council, or excuse me, the commission unanimously approved the project, uh, with recommendations and forwarded, uh, they unanimously approved with recommendations, uh, unanimously forwarded for council approval with recommendations. The, the project and those three specific recommendations, um, that it's carrying forward, um, for this hearing are to, for the council to receive, uh, input on the wall and monument signage copy, um, to, um, for council to receive, um, board form concrete samples, uh, detailed samples of the finished material. That's an attachment 13, um, in your packet. Uh, staff's also prepared a draft condition, uh, condition of approval, number 22, um, that allows, uh, whichever, um, spec, the number, whichever finished material of that board form that, um, is preferred can be plugged into COA, uh, number 22. And then lastly, uh, for council to receive the design revisions to the front, uh, plaza areas. Um, public outreach, um, all three public meetings were noticed by mail, onsite and an Argus courier at least 10 days in advance. Uh, there were 21 public comments received prior to the study session. Um, 13 were in support, eight expressed concerns regarding traffic, architecture, walkability, location of the fairgrounds and public improvements. At the study session, 15 members of the public gave testimony, six in support, nine concerned about, uh, timing of the fairgrounds master plan, alternative parking for the Speedway, creating a park like setting, architecture and emergency response routes. Uh, prior to the planning commission hearing, uh, two public comments were received expressing concerns regarding public resources and flooding. Uh, there was no public testimony, um, at the, during public comment period, uh, at the, at the planning commission hearing on the 23rd of September. Um, and then before this hearing, there was one written comment received regarding concerns, uh, expressing concerns regarding public resources. The city has also launched several outreach efforts, uh, including a dedicated webpage, targeted email announcements and social media posts. Uh, I'll summarize staff's, um, findings. Staff is able to make the necessary findings, uh, for project approval. Uh, in terms of the CUP for the facility, the site is adequate in that the size has been determined based upon the operational characteristics of the proposed use and the proposed development, um, is only 3.5 acres of the undeveloped portion of the 48-acre city property. Outdoor parking will be screened from view by a combination of the buildings, fencing and landscaping. The community serving uses are compatible with other community serving uses, such as a swim center, skate park and library. The proposed, uh, public safety facility is permitted by right in both the ME one B and the CF zones. The project proposes a two-story building to minimize the footprint and all existing uses on the city fairgrounds property would be maintained. Uh, streets are adequate and provide a central location for enhanced emergency response. There's also supplemental, additional criteria for new uses in the fairgrounds, um, that are within the overlay, uh, zone. The proposed public safety facility is an anticipated use for the fairgrounds and is consistent with the fairgrounds guiding principles adopted in city council resolution 2022 167, including preserving and enhancing the capacity of the fairgrounds property to provide critical emergency response resources for Petaluma and the region. The use provides a public benefit. For the CUP for the major telecommunications facility, the telecommunications facility use complies with all applicable setbacks. The supporting equipment and power supply would be within the proposed accessory building. The, um, telecom facility would be required, is conditioned to provide a radio frequency report, uh, as well as, there's another condition, um, for it to be constructed to survive for it to be constructed to survive a natural disaster and continue to function. And the major telecommunications facility would be for the exclusive use of the PSF, and is considered a public necessity. Spar findings for the public safety facility. The project incorporates high-quality materials, including board form concrete walls with maple wood and aluminum accents, provide durability and architectural detail. The design incorporates various styles, including civic, agrarian, and industrial architecture. The library and swim center uses, like other civic uses, the facility is highly visible from all public rights of way and is easily accessible by foot, bike, transit, and vehicle. Again, the project proposes a two-story building to minimize the footprint, and all existing uses on city fairgrounds property would be maintained. Project uses color material landscaping elements to reduce the appearance of bulk. The proposed landscaping is appropriate for the site and compatible with the character of the neighborhood in that a robust palette of shrubs proposed in a curvilinear pattern would counterbalance the rectangular form. Spar for the telecom facility. There would be a high-quality steel tapered construction with a condition for flat paint. No other location is feasible for this facility based on the alternatives and colocation analysis found in Attachment 12. The monopole would be sighted within the secured parking area and behind the rear elevation of the building. Visual impact would be minimized as shown on the photo simulation in Attachment 8. And the telecom facility is conditioned to comply with all applicable specific regulations under PMC Chapter 1444. Environmental review, the project is statutorily exempt from further environmental review under CEQA pursuant to the CEQA guidelines, Section 15183, in that the project is consistent with the development density established by the city's existing IZO and consistent with the city of Petaluma general plan, for which an EIR has been certified. And staff's analysis can be found in the environmental checklist for streamlined review in Attachment 11. There's also a section in your staff report tonight regarding proposed development impact fee waivers. The ones bolded on your screen, staff has recommended a discretionary fee waiver from council. We're bringing this forward tonight because the timing of fees, development impact fees for non-residential projects is at the time of building permit issuance. So this is a good opportunity for this to be reviewed. And the findings are in Attachment 2 and the spar resolution. They're in the spar resolution because the CUP would not have a building permit, whereas the spar would have a building permit to be able to have that timing of the building permit issuance. And the analysis in the staff report has to do with this being a public project, which would be the basis for the waivers. And with that, staff is able, recommends that city council consider the resolution in Attachment 1 to approve CUP for the proposed public safety facility with major telecommunications. And also consider a resolution in Attachment 2 to approve the spar for the proposed safety facility with major telecommunications. And I'd also just like to point out that this slide says planning commission, but as I read, it is before the council for final review authority and consideration. Thank you, and happy to answer any questions. And we also have the applicant, city applicant team in attendance and design team for other presentations. Thank you.
We're moving right into the second half here seamlessly. All right, let's do that.
Okay, good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Paul Gaggen, project manager with the City of Petaluma Public Works and Utilities Department. I'd like to start off the city team's presentation by recapping a few important points about this project, especially for those who may be new or tuning in for the first time. The Petaluma Public Safety Facility project represents a once-in-a-generation investment in Petaluma's public safety and resilience. This is a true milestone for our city, the first new police and fire facility in more than 40 years, made possible by the voter-approved Measure U and Measure H. As we mentioned at previous city council meetings and hearings, it's important to note that these measures were not a windfall for the city, they were commitments. When voters approved Measure U and Measure H, they gave us both the mandate and the means to invest in public safety and community resilience. This project is part of honoring that promise. For the first time in decades, we now have the staffing, the expertise, the centralized city site, and the revenue capacity to deliver what past councils could only plan for. This facility is not a nice-to-have, it's a once-in-a-generation investment in the safety and resilience of our community and a fulfillment of the commitment made to the people of Petaluma. I'll be handing this over to our police and fire chief in a moment to talk about the historical operational needs this facility will address. Before I do that, though, I want to walk through the design evolution and how in lockstep with city feedback, we've got to where we are today. So when we first presented this project to city council in November of 2023, it was envisioned as a $140 million project with $120 million in construction costs, spread over five acres with a completion projected in 2035. The clear feedback we heard from council and the public at that time was that the project needed to be scaled back. It was too large, too costly, and too far out in time, and we should refine it into something more practical and achievable with a smaller footprint. And since then, we've worked hard to do exactly that. The city leveraged the in-house skills of the public work staff, MAC5 and LPA, and together we've refined this facility into a $70 million project with an estimated construction contract of $54 million on a three-and-a-half-acre site strategically located to minimize impacts to the future fairgrounds master plan. At the same time, we've added improvements that will benefit the fairgrounds as a whole, including a new road and a junction off Kennelworth to access the fairgrounds, multi-use pedestrian and bike paths. And we've upgraded the sewer and storm drain lines. They've been sized to serve not just this facility, but the broader fairgrounds as a whole. We brought this refined plan forward at the August 4th Joint Planning Commission and City Council workshop, and we're grateful for the feedback and recognition of the careful balance between budget, schedule, and operational needs required to make this project viable. Having that joint study session when we did and the guidance we received was critical. It gave us the clarity to prioritize what mattered most, and it allowed us to make thoughtful refinements in advance of the recent September planning commission hearing, where those updates were well-received and unanimously supported. Tonight, you'll see those refinements carried forward in LPA's presentation, showing how this collaboration shaped a balanced responsive design that is ready to move forward. So what did we hear at that August joint workshop? Four clear themes emerged that guided the refinements you will see tonight. First, on architecture and civic character, a desire for a warmer, more welcoming facade that reflects Petaluma's civic identity with materials and articulation that avoid a fortress-like feel. Second, on site and landscape, we heard add more trees, shade, and pedestrian amenities to create a park-like frontage while maintaining the security that the facility requires. Third, on operations and design, we heard ensure security and 24/7 functionality for both police and fire, with flexibility for training or community use where appropriate. And finally, on budget and momentum, we heard keep the project moving while staying within budget and scope. Those four priorities, architecture, site, operations, and momentum have shaped the refinements you'll see in LPA's presentation here tonight, along with a few additional requests from the planning commission, like simplifying the facility name, adding public seating, and refining the color of the monopole. Before I hand this over here to Chief Miller and our design team, LPA, I just want to make note of something important, which I did at the planning commission as well. As we go through the project tonight, please keep in mind that we are not a developer or a profit-driven organization. If at times the design feels measured or restrained, that's not because corners were cut. It's because every decision reflects a careful balance between function, cost, and the long-term community value of this facility. Everyone on this city team is a public servant. Many of us live here, raise our families here, and we take real pride in delivering the very best facility possible for our community. This project design has been a constant balance between budget reality, operational needs, and civic character. With that, I'll hand it over to Chief Miller here, who'll speak through the operational needs the facility will address, and then LPA will walk you through the design evolution with some detailed renderings.
Great. Thank you. Brian Miller, I'm your police chief. I'm also joined tonight by Fire Chief, or Fire Chief Jeff Shock. He's on virtually. I'm going to run through our portion of the presentation, just myself. He'll be on later in the presentation for a Q and A on the fire-centric components. But, you know, we've been talking about police and fire facilities for the entirety of my career. And so this has been something that, you know, we've known that our facilities have been in dire need for well over 20 years. We've been in our police facility for almost 40 years now. And our police station was intended to be temporary, it's outdated, it's served its life, its well-intended use, but we've outgrown it. It was never designed to be a police station, it was converted in its former life. It's served its purpose, but that day has now passed and it's time to move on. I exchanged emails last week with the former chief Parks and was talking about one of the biggest challenges with that facility, which was some clear direction we got from the council, which was to look for a new facility with a dedicated emergency operations center. And he was reflecting on one of the challenges when he was the police chief, which was the time where they handled the polyclass investigation. And he talked about one of the biggest hindrances on the best day in our current facility is running an emergency operations during just regular operations. And at its worst moment was managing an emergency operations during the polyclass investigations. And so he reflected on that and was pleased to hear 25 years after his retirement that we're now talking about a new facility with a dedicated emergency operations center that's not in the middle of police operations. So that's one of the things that we got clear direction from the council previously when we went through a strategic master planning process, was to pursue a centralized police-fire and a centralized emergency operations center. Because, as I mentioned, one of the biggest challenges in my current facility is we have a briefing room, a training room, a break room, and an emergency operations center that are all one space, that are the core, the heart of my facility. And that we, as you heard Mr. Janicek speak on, our whole building is 9,000 square feet, and this new facility is 45,000 square feet with dedicated spaces and shared spaces. So it's greatly going to drastically improve and address some of the major workflow issues and operational constraints that we've been working in for the past 40 years. And highlighting the needs and the challenges we went through, a robust and comprehensive public safety master plan that identified and used third-party analysis and workflow to assess the hindrances and the concerns and identify the pain points and the operational needs that not only the police department needed, but the fire department needed, and helped us identify not only the programming and the space needs and the improvements, but also the acceptable locations and the site planning that we should be considering and the constraints that we needed to be considering that really guided our path in the direction of this process. And, thank you. Yep. And so I guess the question is, when we talked about, it's been something that we've talked about for 20 years, at least, that I've worked for the city of Petaluma. The question really is, why now? And that question is, we've gone through a master planning process. We've heard in clear direction from this council. The timing really is a generational moment. It's no better timing than now. We have an opportunity that is unique and fleeting with essentially city-owned site that makes complete sense. Proximity, location, central located, responsive to a growing city, where, at least from my operational model, we are offset in a place that no longer makes sense as the city has grown and changed. And as you heard from my counterpart, we have a commitment. The city passed Measure U, the counties passed, the voter adopted Measure H because there were public safety needs, and they were approved with public safety expectations, with commitments to the public to make investments in our public safety facilities and our public safety staff. And it's our opportunity to make good on those investments and make good on those investments in a centrally-located location that makes sense with the services that we need and are in dire need and have known that we need to make those investments in our police and fire facilities here at the city. And as you heard, we've gone through a few different iterations of our master planning process from 140. If we had unlimited resources and unlimited land and unlimited budget, and the unicorn of ideas, what would we be able to do? And that's not the reality we work in, and that's not the reality of the constraints that we have. And we've done a really good job of refining the budget, the scope, and the needs and the operational necessities to find a project that makes and meets the merit of what we feel the community expects of us, what we need from essential services, and what the direction we heard from, I think, the planning commission and from you all in the joint study session, and I think what the voters expect from us from when they approved both those ballot measures. And then I think we've also heard a lot of concerns from the fairgrounds master planning process and tried to be good stewards of future master planning processes and integrations. And as you'll see in some of the design renderings, have tried to be really, really thoughtful about how we can set this project up to integrate into future design and active transportation and layouts as we try to improve broader accessibility and accessibility issues into the fairgrounds area and the Johnson Drive area as we make this to be a project and a location of the civic facility that's welcoming and accessible to all community members, and especially community members that find themselves in emergency crisis or in need of assistance. And so for those reasons, I think I just want to leave it with this. For someone who's been here as a brand-new employee that started when he was hired by chiefhood and told, you know, next year, we're going to have a brand-new second story on the existing police department and can't wait, you know, you're going to have an awesome new facility. And now 19 years later, still waiting for that. This, to me, feels like the most real project in the entirety of my career, where we actually have a viable public safety facility that's going to happen with the counterpart, with our fire department, where it just makes sense, it's practical, and it actually is going to meet the operational needs and be in a location that just makes common sense for the needs of the community. And then just briefly, just kind of give you a trajectory. You've got an explanation from Paul on where we've been tracking and what we've been working on and the changes through the project. But this is a project timeline on kind of what we've been doing and the milestones that we've met through the project in and of itself, starting back with the strategic master planning that was adopted by council in 2023, bringing on LPA and MAC5 and consulting with Mary Dooley, who provides some design input. Coming back to the joint study session in August, and then coming to the planning commission and to the council here for the public hearings, which is currently where we're at. We're doing final kind of basis of design refinements, which is something I never thought I'd be I'd be doing, which is quite tedious, and finalizing design basis and bid documents currently right now, which is ongoing, but you'll see the future projections out there, which start getting quite accelerated here in the spring, which is really, really exciting for my team. It's one of the things that we're projecting out and talking on recruitment and things in the law enforcement community, there's a lot of chatter amongst recruits and at the academy, talking about Petaluma and about this project and about looking to spring in '26 and '27, and that Petaluma PD and Petaluma Fire have a potential public safety facility that's coming up on board, and that's an agency that's got a lot of exciting things happening down there. So I'll leave it there and I'll turn it over to Helen and Lance, who are our LPA consultants, who are going to walk you through the design and the project in and of itself.
All right. And it's the down button, not the right button.
Hello, everyone. Hello again. I'm Helen Pierce, I'm with LPA, I'm an architect. With me is Lance Lott-Hunter at Landscape Architect. How's everyone doing? It's late night, about two hours past my bedtime, so bear with me. We're going to go through some slides that you all have seen, some of you have seen it a couple of times, all of you probably seen it at least once, but I think it's important to go through these. So this first series of slides are really just showing you kind of where this project lives in sort of increasingly more detail. So this first slide is just showing, you know, the sort of central location of this site and how critical that is to the success of this facility. The second slide is zooming in a little bit more into the context of the community around the Fairgrounds, connectivity to the freeway, and then zooming in a little bit more to the Fairgrounds here and that site that Michael talked about a little bit already in the sort of northern corner of the Fairgrounds site, that three and a half acres, that way out, bigger way to outline is the outline of Fairgrounds itself. And then the context around this site, the swimming pool and skate park kind of to the west, and then the library further to the west, the grandstands of the Fairgrounds to the south, and then the shopping center to the east of this site, surrounded by Johnson and Kennelworth Streets. And this is that context. It's been mentioned already that we've started to look at revising the material based on the great feedback that we got from all of you the last time we were here, some really insightful commentary that made us sort of reconsider what the materiality of this might want to feel like, going, moving away from the corrugated sort of metal-formed concrete to the, to a board-formed concrete to bring in warmth and lightness to the facility, and you'll see that in the renderings, and you'll see that in contrast to what we showed you the last time. So again, this is the site adjacent to Johnson and Kennelworth. This is the environmental concerns around this site, how the sun moves around the site has really informed the design from a sustainability standpoint, how water runs from this site has designed this, has impacted the site design in terms of how we capture stormwater runoff, and how, even how wind impacts the site has somewhat influenced how we, where we would put trees and how we provide shelter in the site. This is circulation around the site, so the yellow is the multi-use trail, there will be a new trail around the site, starting on Johnson, wrapping around on Kennelsworth, and ultimately connecting to that pedestrian connection that goes over a pedestrian bridge over the freeway.
One thing that definitely came from a lot of the engagement that we had in regards to site layout was just understanding the importance of having clear direction and ease of entering the facility. So you'll see here off the west side, there's an access drive that gets you into the secured parking on that left-hand side. To the south is where we have some additional access, an additional access road that gets the larger apparatuses into the facility more easily, so taking advantage of the long straights to get the larger vehicles into the apparatus bay more easily and quickly when it comes to servicing the community. And then to the north is where you have your main drive entry into the actual secured, or into the visitor parking off that side as well, too. So there's been a lot of iterations and a lot of design that has taken, that has come into play to understand the most efficient way of getting into the facility. So zooming out and looking at the site plan, not much has changed in regards to placement from when you last saw this. What has changed is, you know, our approach to being more sensitive to the actual character and the functionality of the site design. One thing that has, you know, been a resolve of the design is having this be more reflective of the context, you know, Helen spoke about how we have so many influences around us, not only in terms of how the architecture has been developed, but similarly with the landscape, you know, the notion of this wants to be a park-like setting that is indicative of someplace that is welcoming and someplace that is very reflective of Petaluma's character was something that we went back to the drawing board and refined within the design itself. One notable thing that I also want to bring to our attention is the additive inclusion of seating throughout the site, and having this visitor parking lot actually double as this event space for community events. We had a lot of dialogue in regards to how we can make sure that this space is going to be something that is welcoming, engaging, and a space that really is a community element and a community benefit. And so things that were also kind of brought into our attention, are into our intention for reconsideration, is the actual materiality utilized within that space, this being the concrete pavers, you know, taking out the utilitarian feel of asphalt in a parking lot, but actually putting some type of enhanced material that really speaks to the space of it being welcoming and one that would be enjoyed by people that come and partake in the events that happen at the facility. So that in terms of providing really rich and enhanced materiality, you know, actually drilling down and finding places to where we can have folks take advantage of the seating elements in and around the space have been great transformational elements of the design that really speaks to this being a facility that is one for the community and to be enjoyed by the community as well. You can see here in greater detail, too, that the plant material also kind of speaks to a non-formal arrangement. Previously, you guys saw a design that was a little bit more indicative of a more streamlined approach when it comes to the landscape, but again, spending time in the community and seeing the actual character that is invoked throughout really helped us kind of refine this to be more of a non-formal garden-like type of aesthetic for the landscape design
So looking at the floor plans, two things I want to point out, and I think we talked about this the last time we were here, but it was, and Chief Miller talked about this, too, you know, it's a real effort to be very efficient with this plan because we knew we had to be in terms of getting this to a point in the budget that was doable. The other thing we need to do, and this is really critical, was to provide and maximize the amount of shared space between fire and police so that we could maximize space for both of them and still have that fit within this sort of very efficient envelope. So in this plan, everything you see in that sort of lighter red color is sort of strictly fire, everything that you see in the blue is strictly police, and everything you see in gray, you see there's a lot, awful lot of it, it's shared space between police and fire, and that was very deliberate and a lot of work to make that, to realize that shared space through our programming and design efforts. And then this is the second floor plan, again, the red is the fire and the blue is police and use, again, you see a lot of gray space, which is that shared space, again, very deliberate and just through a lot of effort and compromise and understanding of how we could maximize that shared space. The plans in general are organized with the police to the left and the fire to the right in this plan, again, with the shared space mixed between. There's a public space that faces that visitor parking plaza to the north and protected, shared space to the south that's shared between police and fire. At the main lobby, which is where the yellow arrows are, you can see this is where the main public entrance to this facility would be, directly off the lobby to the right is police records, that's where you go in and talk to someone about a police matter, and then to the left is the EOC, giving it a sort of direct link to the exterior, direct link to the lobby, making that highly visible and highly shareable with the community, and that was a really important aspect of the design from day one. Additional elements that really drove the design were service elements like trash, and you can see that here, and not super exciting, but really important for everyone. And then also all the sort of ugly bits that have to go into buildings like electrical and IDF and fire access rooms and all those things, locating that in a place that's accessible and can stack floor to floor was really critical. And then all that planning that we did at the first level and all those adjacencies that were really important at the first level really start to determine how this stacks vertically. The fire dorms obviously have to be close to the apparatus bay, so that's sort of determined where those were. All the services to the right, that gray bubble, those all have to stack with the services at the first level, and then that sort of drives where the circulation stacks from the first floor as well in terms of stairs and corridors. So the building starts to lay out itself a little bit, and just be very efficient in that way, too. We showed this a little bit the last time we met, and I don't want to go over in detail, but the design from day one really was about understanding how we could connect with place, with Petaluma, its people, and as well as the program that's required for both police and fire and all that shared space. At the same time, we were thinking about how we can be, create a resilient facility, an economic facility, and that's where the idea of the telt wall concrete structure came to be, because it kind of kills like three birds with one stone, it creates structure, it creates insulation, it's fast, and it's economic. So it's a really, and it provides a bit of security to it because that is, you know, 12 inches of concrete, so it's safe as well. We wanted to connect to the Fairgrounds Aquarian Past, and we've talked about that a little bit, and I think we're even doing that more so now with the sort of board form and the warmth that that brings, and that's really nice. And then we wanted to have a civicness to it as well, and you'll see that when we get to the images, you'll see how we've really transformed from what you saw the last time to create what I think is all three of these things in a stronger way. Materials, we're looking again at a natural palette of, we call them resilient materials, think something that'll last, it's economic, but it'll last a long time and it'll bring in the warmth and of the warmth of the materials. So what we heard, this is a rendering that you saw the last time, so this is, don't get excited, this is the old rendering, but what we heard, and Michael and Paul talked about this a little bit, some of the comments were about the darkness of it, about the coolness of it, the lack of color, the corrugated finish was a concern, and, you know, the implementation of art was a concern. So we went back and we looked at all those things within the context of all the stuff I just talked about. And so this is the new design, I'm going to go back just for like maximum effect here, this is old, this is new, very different, very much warmer, very much lighter, the texture of the wood is noticeable difference. At the end of this presentation, we have some samples of different board forms, just digitally, just in the PowerPoint, not physically, but you'll get to see some options there. But you'll, I think, hopefully what you take away from this is the lightness, the warmth, the breaking down in scale, I think that was something that may have been mentioned previously. We're doing three things here to help with the scale, one is the apparatus bay material is a different color than the two-story portion bay, so that helps to separate and differentiate. We also beefed up the canopy at the front of this to make it feel like more of a volume, so it breaks down the overall volume of this two-story piece, and you can see that here in this rendering. So this is another view, this is what you saw the last time. I distinctly remember one of the comments was about the verticality of this, and that feeling maybe stripey or something like that. And I think one of those things was the sun shades on the windows here and how they went up past the windows in combination with the very strong corrugated material that we had here along with the darkness. So in this new design, the window shades are still shading the windows, in fact, they're shading them a little bit better because they sort of wrap around the window as an L shape, so they're still protecting those windows from the west, which is really important. And then you can see the board form material here. You can see the darker color, you start to see the darker color of the apparatus bay on the right with the red fire, fire engine red fire doors. We still have the wood scrim in front of the EOC, again, bringing in that warmth, it's on the underside of the canopy as well, so sort of this bent of wood that carries through that entire entryway. You can still see the placeholder for art in between the apparatus bay and the two-story building. Moving in a little closer, this is what you saw the last time, and this is the new. One thing I wanted to point out here as well, I think there was a comment the last time we were here about maybe having the seal occur somewhere on this site, and that would be a good, great thing to have on this building. So we batted that around a little bit, but I think what we came to at the end is placing it on the glass, and you can see it on the glass of the lobby here. So that'd be a great backdrop for a press conference or something like that, where you'd have the seal behind you with the fire and police department signage above, sort of a great place for that. And this is, you know, zooming in a little bit more, you can really understand the materiality of this, the warmth of the wood of the canopy, the signage, the wood board-formed concrete wall, the coping on the top, it's sort of the same color as the wood, so again, just bringing in warmth wherever we can, but also having contrast, and I think that contrast was really important to make this, to help break down the mass as well. This is the older version, looking back along Johnson, and this is the new. Again, seeing the darker color apparatus bay and that breaking down the mass of this whole sort of facility between the lighter color two-story facility. We're also bringing that wood slat across in between the fire apparatus bay doors, so there's some continuity of that, the warmth of that wood across the whole facility. This is looking straight on, this is the previous design, and this is the new, so you can see that that wood that carries all the way across in between the fire apparatus I want to shout out to the Dalmatian that showed up for the fire engine. This is looking back towards the west from Johnson, looking across the facade, this is the image that Michael showed you earlier with the apparatus bay far in the distance, you're sort of getting a better view of the plaza here, this is the paver that Lance mentioned, and you're looking down, sort of down Kennelworth here, and really what's prominent here is that placeholder for the art piece that wraps around the corner, and that's still in play.
Yes.
I just want to also say you can start to see how we're starting to allude to having more diversity in plant structure where it's less massing, right, but more of the ones you choose is more of a garden-esque type of layout and form.
And looking straight across. And looking straight across Kennelsworth, looking at the, sort of the, I guess that'd be the east side of the building, that's the, again, the placeholder for that art armature that wraps around the corner. And just to remind you why that art is there is because that's the corner where we have a, a bunch of spaces that can't have windows, right? So we were using that as a big moment to create some really great piece of art that wraps around, and it's a highly visible corner to help break down the scale as well. And then this is looking back along Kennelsworth at the, the fence along Kennelsworth that's being broken down in these sort of panels that could have growies going up them as well. You see the, you see the monopole, thank you, in the distance. The reason I didn't talk about it in any of those other views is because you can't see it in any of those other views. You really have to be around the corner and looking at it here. So it's not a highly visible element on the site. And then this is marching, this is wrapping all the way around the site, looking at it from the far south corner at, to the right would be the entry into the secure parking lot. This is be essentially where it would connect to the rest of the fairgrounds at some point. And this is, what this is showing is the fencing that wraps around that secured parking with hedges around it to screen it as much as, as much as we can. You also notice there's a row of trees going down the left on the other side of the drive that get, become part of the, the separation between the, this facility and the, and the fairgrounds. And then this is a view kind of at the entry, so this is that, this is that press conference that's going to happen one day here. Chief Miller up at the stand giving a presser in front of the seal. And you can see that, you can see the pavers here pretty well, really. And then this is looking back a little more down. I think one of the things we want to point out here is the addition of seating along that multi-use trail, and you can see it here, a bench sitting kind of under the trees, under the shade of the trees. And we have two other locations that we, you may have seen on the, on the site plan, we can point them out if you didn't see them. But that was a, that was a great recommendation during our planning meeting last month. Just another sort of an aerial view, an overall aerial view of the facility. Then materials, I mentioned the, the wood slat material at the main entry. When we met with planning, there was some questions about the wood slat and would they, would the age and, you know, could we look at some other materials that might age better? Because wood can gray, you have to refinish it over a period of time. And so we went back and we looked at that. So we're proposing a, it's actually an aluminum material, it's just like wood. It has a wood finish in it, it doesn't age, right? So it looks as beautiful as wood, and it doesn't gray. So that's what we're proposing here. It's called knot wood, slightly name. Going sort of counterclockwise from the middle, there's the placeholder for the mural to the right, and the wood board formed material in the upper right-hand corner, the city logo center top, and then the L-shaped perforated metal fins that would wrap the window and shade them, and then finally the soffit of that canopy, this piece of wood. And this has all, the, the apparatus bay has all this, you know, pretty much the same materials, it's just a darker concrete with the same board form wood and the red, fire engine red apparatus bay doors. And then this is looking down Kennelsworth. The immediate item on the right is perforated panels in front of transformers that we need to have on the site that need to have sort of full access. So we're screening them with a perforated metal, so you don't see those transformers. And then further down, it's two, two varieties of CMU. One is a split face, it's in the panel, and then one is a burnished face that's in between the split face. And then further down is the, is the picket fencing that has hedge in front of it. So we have a few images here of potential board form finishes. There are six in total, and these are, to be clear, these are polymer form liners. So they're basically like a, almost like a rubberized item that's been pressed to look like wood, and then the concrete gets laid in it, and when you strip them off, the concrete has that wood texture, just in case there wasn't any clarity on that. So we have six, seven, one of them's called barn boards, and it's a, a little bit more sort of like, almost like damaged wood, older wood, worn wood. One is called staggered oak, and that one has a little bit more three-dimensional ality to it. The next one to it is staggered heavy oak, which is the same, but just has more sort of aged grain to it. The, the one all the way to the right is weathered wood, and that's the one that you'll see in, that you see in the renderings. That's the one that we kind of liked. And then the two at the bottom, I can't read because the text is over it, but maybe when we get to the next slides, we will be able to. This is an image of a board formed concrete using those same form liners, so that gives you an actual photo of what that looks like, and it's sort of up close, in a very sort of light concrete. So this is the barn board option. This is the staggered oak option. This is the staggered heavy oak. This is the weathered wood. This is the old timber, which is very nice, actually. These are ones I couldn't read before. This is the weathered fir. Again, this one has a really heavy, heavy grain to it, but is very sort of two-dimensional as well. I think that, I think that's all, yeah, that's all. And I will leave it there. Thank you so much.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. So we're going to go to questions, but I thought I'd ask staff for a real quick recap. Obviously, we're going to ask, come to around to, to resolutions that need approval and things, but are there discrete element items now that you're asking about as well as all the things we want to ask about?
Correct, Mayor. There are three discrete items as an outcome of the September 23 Planning Commission. They are the, the board form samples, direction on, on that finished material. Let me just reference my slides real quick. As well as the copy, the actual text and wording of the wall signage and the monument sign. And then the last item is some input and direction on the proposed seating options in the public areas of the site. There's seating, shading, and placemaking revisions that are before this evening, and staff's requesting your input on behalf of Planning
Okay. Thank you. Those are good tips. While everybody's thinking about their question list, I'll just jump in with one or two easy ones. So will this facility allow the fire department to host their regional trainings here rather than at the Casey Park, Casey Community Center?
Just Chief Shock on at this time.
Yes, absolutely. Thanks for the question, and sorry I have to be virtual.
Yeah, no worries. I just wanted to, you know, make sure that I, and similarly, will this end all of our off-property leases for police and fire?
Yes. For, for the fire department, we currently have leased space next to the D Street Station, and once this facility is completed, that leased space will no longer be required.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, and for the police department, I think you're probably referring to our emergency vehicle lease storage space that we lease at a cost of $120,000 a year. So that lease is actually ending at the end of this year. That property is in the current planning and development phase, so we're, we're vacating that lease agreement here shortly. So we are not planning to, to re-lease any, any new facilities, and the, our emergency vehicles are planned to be incorporated in this new facility. We will, for the short term, retain our, our existing, what's called our traffic office on, on Payran Street that we don't, we, we lease for no cost currently from Burbank Housing, and just keep that as a remote report writing office for the short term, just temporarily. And I think that'll also help ensure navigating this transition goes seamlessly, and we have some computers that work in the transition for a short period of time.
Thank you. When we talk about the funding stack to put this whole thing together, the leased properties come into play, and that 100, 100K will be handy. Is the EOC an open space between emergencies? Is it a, is it a multi-use room? Or is it, is it established and locked until the day there's an emergency?
Yeah, so it's designed off the lobby, so it's, it's accessible. I think that, you know, it's, it's planned for, you know, use for trainings and things of that nature. I don't know that it's necessarily just going to be a public use space where we're having just open, open meetings for the general public necessarily, but we will be booking things and helping, envisioning things like I, I think the fire chief spoke in, at previous meetings about hosting CPR trainings and community events of that nature in the EOC when it's not in operation. So I think we have plenty of opportunities where we're envisioning it being regularly scheduled and, and in use most days throughout the year and not, not, not in use.
And you must have thought through the secondary streets, not Kennelworth-Johnson. How, how do you ensure that they're not bypasses and that, you know, people scooting around the wrong way there? What, what thought went into that?
Are you talking about the ones on the, the sides?
Third and fourth side of the building.
Yeah, so currently those are not adjoining or connecting, so those access roads don't go all the way through for two purposes. One, for that very same reason, and two, we also didn't want to connect things necessarily all the way, not knowing what the full master planning of the fairgrounds was. So those are, for the short term, dedicated emergency vehicle access roads. We do plan to have multi-use paths on the far sides, not the facility side, so that we can have pathway use and biking on the non-conflict side of the facility side of those areas. We do have plans for Speedway access to come off the, the side closest to the shopping center because we know there's gate access into the Speedway into that area. And then down the road, I think through the master planning fairgrounds process, if those things do make sense to have intersections and future programming and connectivity through, then, then I think we were welcoming those to continued conversations there. But in the short term, they're not connecting at the back for that same, very same reason, because we didn't want people going through or parking back there, creating conflict.
Great, thank you. Who wants to lead with questions? Vice Mayor?
Thank you. To lead off with what the mayor was just talking about with traffic directions, I'm, I'm looking forward to hearing from the city traffic engineers. As you're going down Washington Street from the overpass and you're turning into that Johnson's or the Target parking lot on the right, there's two right-hand turns. The, the one that goes into the Target Shopping Center or the Swim Center or the Skate Park, and the other one, it gets confusing, and I've watched cars not understand that they're not going to Target, they have to turn right into the parking lot in front of the fairgrounds. It's a very confusing, and I've seen people that aren't familiar with it get in the wrong lane and have to get into that farther left-hand lane to keep going on to Target. So I'm waiting for the city traffic engineers to come in and see what they can do to reconfigure how people access that area from Washington Street, going, you know, as you're going into downtown from the overpass to the right or to the left. The other thing is the other side, I've, I've watched it. I actually was there when he was changing the sign language for tonight's meeting, and I sat there and watched traffic at that four-way intersection. And it's one car at a time, and people are very polite. I didn't see anybody get angry or anything, but it's so you can get back to Washington Street and get on to the freeway. And not too many people take that, is it Limburg? That goes in front of Target alongside the backside of the fairgrounds. Not too many people take that direction. They're either going into the shopping center, or they're turning left to go to the Washington Street. So there's another intersection that the city traffic engineers are going to have to configure. Your, the fire department and the police department have staff promotions, the pinning, the badging, those kind of events will be held in that EOC area inside the building?
Yeah.
Okay. And that draws families and community, and they're going to need that parking as they celebrate their, their family member or friend who's getting promoted. And that's a very exciting thing. I don't know if anybody's been to one, but I've been to quite a few, and they're like crammed in there at the existing police department. And the fire department usually does it here. I'm not even sure where they do it. I know they do one.
They do it in their apparatus bay.
Okay.
Yeah.
I, I'm forgetting. It's been a while since we've had one of those. But it'd be nice to have those ceremonies in somewhere where the public is invited and family members are invited, and it will be used by both fire and police.
Hundred percent.
Correct? As far as the, are we supposed to ask about the, or vote our opinions on the wood, the non-wood, or is that for later?
This is questions.
Okay.
So let's get through questions, get them, get the public up here.
That's my question. When do we get to vote on that, or give an opinion?
Later.
Later. Thank you.
Okay. And Councilwoman Barnacle?
Thanks. First question on the naming. Are we, are we settled on Petaluma Police and Fire Departments? Is that the?
Yeah, I think the fire chief and I, we, we worked on that. I think it just makes sense.
Great. Okay. And then my second question is for Chief Shock. We're gonna, I imagine, get questions about just going back to the context of why here, why, like why we need a fired facility in the center of town. I've gotten, continue to get that question. And then I also hear, you know, about the traffic, and you've given great responses in the past to that. So I'm just wondering if you can sort of preemptively talk about why we need this facility here and why, in particular, this location on the fairgrounds is the best from a circulation standpoint?
Yeah, thank you, thank you very much, Councilwoman Barnacle. So when we did our public safety facility, not only the master planning, but our comprehensive analysis, it identified that 10% of emergency calls for service. So when somebody breaks a leg, has a heart attack, or their house is on fire, 10% of the time, a fire engine is not responding from your neighborhood fire station, one of our three. It's coming from across town because the other fire station is already busy. So it increases our response times from three to four minutes to six to seven minutes, which is a big deal when somebody's having a heart attack or their house is on fire, obviously. So by having a centralized location right between the east and the west side, it allows, when those 10% of the time that situation occurs, it's a, it's a, there's a fire engine and a paramedic coming from the center of town to your area of town and not from all the way across town. So that's one reason for the centralized location. Additionally, our ladder truck currently is on the north end of town at our Corona Station. Our ladder truck is the one that can reach, you know, six, seven-story buildings. It has our automotive, auto, auto extrication equipment for car crashes, heavy rescue equipment. It's on the north end of town, and during our ISO reviews for insurance purposes, you know, people get better insurance coverage, et cetera. It should be, anything you have one of should be in the center of town, not on the outskirts of town. It should be, anything you have one of should be in the center of town, not on the outskirts of town. So by having this fourth fire station, it allows that piece of apparatus to be in the center of town. And then additionally, as the city grows, as we need to add additional ambulances, fire engines, to augment our current three fire stations, the best location is the center of town. As far as, yes, East Washington, we all agree. Depending on the time of day and most of the day, East Washington overcrossing is a challenge. Emergency vehicles have special rules. We can do special things. Doesn't affect us as much. Yes, we feel bad for the traffic we, we impact. And part of this process, I believe in the next two to three years, will be reevaluating the East Washington overcrossing. Things that council member now identified as well as eliminating the curbs in the center median over East Washington, allowing those to be maybe painted. So fire apparatus and police vehicles can more easily traverse East Washington and not have impacts on traffic and not be hindered by the traffic on East Washington as we respond to emergency calls. Thanks.
Let me jump in for just one second if I could. Council, Vice Mayor?
We need to make a motion to go past 11 o'clock. I will make the motion. I'll, I'll second that.
Thank you. We have motion and second and by a claim. Can I look up and down? Is everybody on board? Good. All right, that motion passes. And Councilmember Barnacle.
Thanks. Follow-on question to that, Chief Shock. There's also, you've talked about why we don't want to have the, the apparatus bay emptying onto Washington. And can you just talk a little bit about how having it set off actually helps with circulation to make sure that calls aren't all just dumping out onto Washington?
Yes, thank you very much for that question. Yeah, and first of all, we didn't want to be on East Washington because we didn't feel we had the, we being public safety and had the, had the onus to determine where on the, on the fairgrounds property we should go. That's, the Washington frontage is high visibility and that, that's for the greater community, I think, to decide on what goes on that high visibility access to the greater fairgrounds property. But, but in addition to that, as you, as you can see from our D Street Station, some of the impacts, those large keep clear areas, having large keep clear areas. So fire and any emergency vehicles directly dumping onto East Washington would create more impact on East Washington. And not only for the keep clear, but if people didn't do the keep clear, then, then emergency vehicles couldn't get onto it. So any, the best access for emergency equipment is to enter a controlled intersection, being a four-way stop sign or a four-way stoplight. Because then we can go cross-traffic and even if traffic's congested, we can traverse an intersection if we enter it at a controlled intersection. Entering directly onto East Washington would be a nightmare for, for, not only for emergency response, but also for regular vehicle traffic. Thanks for the question.
Thank you. So my next question is for the landscape architect. The, one of the comments that we had from the, at the planning commission was more about the seating and shading and things like that and the placemaking. Can you just talk a, I, I think I missed the part of the presentation where we talked about how some of those, that feedback was incorporated.
Right. So if you look up the site plan?
Yeah, let's bring up the site plan.
I think the rendering is a little bit more clear. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I gotta scale it.
Yeah. Perfect, great, yeah. All right, yeah. All right. So as part of the discussion in regards to creating more place making opportunities, we look to include a couple or a few points of interest when it comes to having folks kind of stop along that multi-use path to, you know, take a break, take in the shade and to have more opportunities to actually rest along the actual block of the, of the project. And so on the right-hand side along Killensworth, you'll see the first, number 13 there as one of the first benches that are aligned adjacent to support building. So that's a little breakout that kind of cuts into the garden space, the planting area there. And then as you go further north, more towards intersection of Johnson and Killensworth, there's a second bench that affronts the community plaza. We found this to be a good balance in regards to having the seating opportunity next to the public space whenever there would be an event within that, within that zone. But it wasn't like fully, I guess, incorporated into that courtyard space to where there were some concerns in terms of having a balance in terms of inviting people into that space and kind of managing that when it isn't like for a larger event. And then the third seating opportunity takes place on the north side of Johnson that is right adjacent, the actual walkway that actually brings you in from the public right away into the facility that aligns with that axis into the entry of the facility itself. So those are the three instances of the place making that we've introduced into the project since our, our discussion last.
Great, thanks. And then one, one final question now that we've got this up here. Where the, the number 13 is, the, that's next to the four, is there a pathway that walks through from the parking lot to Kennelworth? Or is it the only entry, exit there at the corner?
That is the only one that kind of goes in that cross diagonal pattern from the intersection. That, that also is another area, number four, that is kind of ear-tagged to be another opportunity for community art. That, this is, the actual art piece in itself is obviously something that'll have to still be explored. But that is an area and a point of interest to where we can, where that might be a great opportunity to kind of celebrate. The art piece in that corner is highly visible. And then it's again adjacent to seating opportunity just off to the, to the east there as well.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Cato Thompson?
I just want to go back to Washington Street. Will we be looking at the entire corridor for eventual changes to, you know, to use the center divide?
I think that's a planning or public works question about the corridor study in general and traffic study as piggybacks into corridor study.
And if, if, if I could, that's, that's one of the things that we need to be considering and we'll look further into. We don't have all the details. What I, what I did forget to mention though with Councilmember Barnacle's question, if we, if the facility entered directly onto Washington, it meant, it would mean that 100% of emergency responses accessed Washington, but there's other access points based on its current location. That was one of the reasons. We can access Kennelworth to Payran, to Limburg, to Caulfield for southeast town responses. We can go through the parking lot and hit Payran and East D Street to go to the west side of town. So that's an important factor as well. Just because of the location doesn't mean East Washington will be the primary response route. It will be one of, one of several because of how we position it. So thanks for letting me add on to that comment, Councilmember Cato Thompson. Appreciate it.
I'll also just add, Paul Koschel, your Public Works Director, on Washington, it is on our five-year plan for paving, for future paving. So we are gonna be looking at that corridor more holistically for future improvements and enhancements, you know, especially in light of the public safety facility.
Okay. Down here, Councilmember DeCarly?
I'm curious if, if you look at the front of the building to the right of the fire engine bays and that access street, what's that, what's that area gonna be, that thin strip? It's, well, in this photo, it's kind of where the 12 is.
Yeah, so the, where 12 is, where the, there's like a line of trees and there's the roadway there. That's the access road, so.
Yeah, not the access road, but between the access road and the last engine bay. Yeah, it's green in that image and in another it was a brown.
Yeah, so that is additional landscape and layout space. One request was that for, for the fire department to have a hose layout area. So when they have to actually fold up their hose, they need a long space to be able to facilitate that type of practice. And so that space actually doubles as an additional space to take on that type of practice.
Okay, thank you. Thanks. I was gonna ask the fire chief if, if a fifth engine bay, since it seemed like the space was there, you know, would be better? Or I didn't know if it was something for like hose layout, so.
Yeah, I, I, I think that at some point in time, there was some talk about that. But I think because of just where the project was, we landed on the four apparatus space.
Thank you, Councilmember DeCarly. One, we did look at leaving that space as potential for a future apparatus bay. And in the initial plans, there were six bays just for future potential expansion. But what we decided on with the, with the oversized parking we developed and that potential space for future apparatus storage that's down closer to 11, that that, you know, was not something that needed to happen now and was used to bring that price down. So now that space can be used for cleaning and drying hose, any, you know, tough sheds or any extra storage needs in the future, et cetera. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And then a question about the property. Is that going to become a separate parcel from the existing fairgrounds property? Is that gonna be sectioned out, pulled out?
Yes, that's correct, Councilmember. It would be approximately a three and a half acre parcel.
And then, you know, I, I like that the building is lightened up a lot and it's a lot warmer. You know, looking at the, at the engine bays, gray always seems like kind of a dreary color. Could we consider maybe making it the same color as the main building? You know, I know, I understand the goal of having the two separate colors is to kind of break up the size of the building. But the art mural already kind of makes a little bit of a break between the two. And I just think gray is just not a very flattering color. So if we, you know, could consider making it the same color and then even perhaps the fence that surrounds it, that's also gray.
I think that's answered that question. I thought the same thing and I looked at it and various members of staff, we went through multiple different renderings and we looked at all different options. And ultimately, we kind of ended up saying, hey, let's lean on the design experts who we've hired to kind of help us with that. And we had Mary Dooley, a local architect as well. And we did look at all these and that's where we ended up. So I think we kind of, we kind of left it to the experts in the room, Mac Five, LPA and Mary Dooley, the local architect, to kind of guide us on that final decision. There was conversations back and forth for all the options. And what, what I always come from in construction, it's in the eye to behold or what looks good and what doesn't. And then 10 different people will have 10 different opinions on it. So again, we kind of left it in the hands of the experts and that's how we ended up where we are with those colors.
Do you have any images you could pull up quick of, of that as you considered it?
I, I wouldn't have those versions. And Helen, I doubt you're gonna have access to get them.
Okay. Yeah, that's pretty much all my questions right now.
Okay. Councilmember Quint?
Yeah, just, just one quick question. I, I like the, the shrubs around the fence line. But the one question that popped up into my, in my mind is, I, I was curious, Chief, if you thought that may create a security issue? If it gives cover for someone hiding between the, the shrubs and the fence?
Yeah, so we've, we've had a lot of conversation on landscaping and trees and shrubbery. So I will say that, that we have found a good compromise. I'll probably leave it there. So as you recall, we had less landscaping and less trees than where we're currently at. And I think that that was finding a suitable compromise with the planning commissioners on getting to this place. We heard some feedback through, through the commissioners on maintenance and the city's ability to maintain and wanting us to maintain what we commit to putting on there, on the facility as well and recognizing some of the struggles that we have at some of our other facilities doing. So making it manageable. But, but yeah, I think, I think we've been really thoughtful and expressing at least my concerns on the facility, which are very, very unique than a lot of other city facilities on placement of shrubbery and trees and proximity to the fence line or line of sight issues. And so I think we've, we've gotten to a really good place. The way the fence is constructed and the shrubbery is placed and the type of shrubbery we've selected really should actually grow through the fence line and actually fill out the fence. One of my concerns was not having a, a full structured fence. And now this is clearly a, more of a wrought iron fence. And so, you know, it's very, very less privacy screened than what I'm accustomed to at our current facility. We have, have a screening through our existing fence. So the shrubbery, as it grows through, will kind of go through the fence line and obstruct that and kind of become part of the fence line more of it itself. And it will become a deterrent that will be less accessible. It'll also be a deterrent for individuals that may try to, to unfortunately, you know, live in the, the landscaping of itself. And so we were trying to find something that was hardy and a deterrent of that nature. And so the species and the type of shrubbery that has been identified for, for the fence line is, is recommended and advisable for all those, those considerations. And for those reasons, I'm, I'm good with it. And we've taken a look at those, those recommendations and it, it works for us.
Thank you. I appreciate your flexibility in that. I mean, I, I do think it softens the look of it. And it's going to be a public safety facility that's, you know, in the heart of our, our fairgrounds. So at some point, you know, it, it'll make it look less compound-ish, if you will.
Yeah, I agree.
Thank you.
Councilmember Shrews?
Okay, thank you for the discussion just on landscaping, because that was where I was gonna actually start. And you actually answered that question for the most part, having done landscape work, especially with hedges and small areas and thin spaces. Hopefully make sure that you do have enough maintenance monies for those things because it does take a little bit more work to keep those in line and work with. Especially you have a lot of trees now that are gonna be in small spaces and probably needing care and pruning and watching out for your watering because irrigation in those spaces are, is critical because you can have a lot, you have lots of hardscape around everything. So, so watering is, and having somebody watch that is gonna be critical. So hopefully you, you already have a landscape maintenance crew above and beyond what the city has, a private firm that's gonna come in and do it.
We're an incredibly proactive police department, so I'll let our firefighter know to make sure they're.
You've got some water tanks out there you can go out and water with. Okay, good.
Dooley noted, sir.
Good. Just making sure you have that. Anyway, the, it looks like there is a, a couple of small medians on Kennelworth Drive that's there. Any concern of that, if you're going out of the parking lot there and going down Kennelworth, any concern because you have a median in the center path right there? Any, to get, in case there's other folks that are parked or traveling in those lanes, you can get by?
Yeah, I'm trying to recall the, on Kennelworth portion. I know on Johnson Drive in front that we are gonna have to do, remove the, the center median directly in front of the facility, but I'm trying to remember Lance, if you recall, on the, on Johnson Drive. I know we've got.
No, I'm saying it's on, yeah, it's on.
Sorry, on Kennelworth. Kennelworth.
Just so you, so I just saw that in the diagrams, because how's your, your fire truck gonna get around that corner and get into that lane, especially if there's a vehicle in the way? So, so yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So as, as, for the benefit of the audience, as Lance was saying, down, down at the access road, we're gonna be doing some redesign there where we have that, that, essentially we're kind of creating an intersection where the access road on the, the southern, the southern section of the property line.
Good. And to a degree, it's nice that you won the coin toss between police and fire or fire and police.
It's a joint facility. We're making it work.
Good. Now, going back to a little more serious stuff. You have a telecommunications tower that's been put in there and it looks like it's gonna be a little bit more of a high-powered tire tower. Is it gonna be as powerful as like a high-energy 5G tower? Or is it just for like city communications with your like shortwave type stuff?
Yeah, so it's almost, it's gonna be comparable to our existing facility right now. So the height is identical to what we currently have on my existing facility. We're bringing over the same infrastructure that we have. All that is is microwave. It's all public safety communications. This is not a commercial cellular. It is only for our infrastructure. This is not something that we're having a Verizon or AT&amp;T infrastructure co-located on it. It's not being sublet to anyone else. It is for Petaluma PD's radio infrastructure and for Petaluma Fire Radio's infrastructure. So if you've driven past our facility, ours is currently located on top of our our fire or our police department. It's 70 feet tall. That tower is not coming with us, but the monopole will be there. The same antennas are essentially being positioned on this monopole. The monopole is not being placed on top of this new facility. It's being put behind it. And so it actually, it's only 30 feet or so above the roof line of the new facility. So it's actually a little bit less visible than what our current tower is.
Good, thank you. And last time, one of the suggestions I put in was having a like a stress relief room or space somewhere.
Yeah.
I was wondering if you were able to get that into one of the inside spaces there, either a space that folks could go in and just have a little quiet time.
Yep, it's currently programmed. It's on the second story, just down the hall from the dispatch center outside of the locker room. So the locker rooms are a shared facility for all of our staff upstairs. So it's a wellness room. It's also serving a dual purpose, so it's gender neutral. It's also available for a lactation room, which is a legal requirement that we currently are using on occupied and office space in our current facility. But we do have a number of new mothers and female employees that need that that facility at times. So we have it do a dual purpose in a new facility for us.
Good, thank you. Then, just looking at having visited the police station, because I'm on the in the community academy there, and I walked back there and there's loads and loads of vehicles. And then I went over there, big vehicles across the street and more motorcycles and more cars all stored and boats and the like. And then I look at the fire department and I go, okay, then add in both fire and police private vehicles? And do we have a real count of if it's totally manned? And everybody brings in their private vehicles plus all the service vehicles? How many space, parking spaces are gonna be left over in that back lot there? Or how many spaces do we have enough of for everything? Because right now you're impacted.
Yeah, so we actually did a physical count of the exact fleet, exact total number of employees and the shift change and the vehicle trips miles and did the count. And so we factored that out. I think we had a total of like it's 111 total parking spaces were needed at that facility, at the new facility at a given time. So we're there. We also have that that existing undeveloped space, which we've talked about putting just rock, just base rock or something and not developing it for that same very facility if we have to have something there temporarily. But all of our vehicles that we have that for our employees, for our fleet vehicles are accounted for and have identified parking spaces. So we don't have any projected future parking needs that we were aware of at this time.
Good. And that includes all the private vehicles that people be driving in with?
Yeah, accounted for our shift change and everything, yes. And then we've also accounted for, you know, an emergency operation center activation. We assume that that outside individuals are gonna be coming to the facility. In our current operations, they park in front of the facility. They're across the street or down on Sycamore Lane. They would do that same kind of model in this this new facility, parking in the fairgrounds parking, walking through the multi-use path into the the public lobby area. So I think we'll make those those things work, but the secure parkings for on-duty staff, personnel that are working in the facility and for the fleet vehicles.
Okay, good. So there's plenty of space. Just for confirmation on that.
Yes, sir.
Which brings you to, given the amount of hardscape on the roof and in the parking lot now, and knowing how many gallons of water I get off my roof, because I have a rain barrel. So I've done those and it's a huge amount of water, three and a half acres. It looks like we have close to 90% hardscape asphalt. And I want to make sure, where is that water going? Is there enough capacity in either the sewer system? And is there a way we could actually take some of that water and actually do the and use it for actually irrigation, that gray water system?
Right. So to answer your last question first, the project isn't designed to utilize the water as a gray water system to recharge it and back or to reuse it as irrigation. But the way that the site has been designed, we're collecting the water in three bio swells. We have one, if you can see on the plan. We have one right just next to number four there on the east side by Johnson, on the corner of Johnson and Killingsworth. We have a second bio soil basin in between Apparatus Bay Drive and the visitor parking drive. And then on the south portion of the secured parking lot, just north of the undeveloped space, that's a long bio trench there as well too, that collects the water. And all the water gets treated, filtered, and then back out to the storm drain system.
So you're talking about the bio swells? Are you talking about above-ground planted areas or are you talking about below-ground tanks?
There are, there are depressions within planting zones. So they're not necessarily collected and treated underground, but they're collected within the actual basin in itself.
Right. And so what, why does the calculation amount of water coming off the site? Because I get concerned about the volume, because I've seen those calculations and it's not near enough in a lot of those places.
It's definitely, I don't have the number off the top of my head, but the depth is based upon the amount of rainfall for this particular area. So it captures it. And then also you have a percentage of how much water is filtered throughout the, within a time period. That also is dependent on how deep you need to go because of that volume. So it's definitely calculated within the within the parameter of being able to anticipate the amount of water flow within the site and how you actually drain the water into those particular basins in itself.
So if it goes to the bio swells and then from the bio swells, it goes straight down into the ground or is there a way of holding it and reusing it?
We don't have good percolation on this site, so it actually goes back into the actual storm drain system connected to the storm drain lines for the city.
So basically it's just holding areas for most of the water and then it still goes in the drain system eventually?
Correct.
Okay, just as a check, but some of, have you calculated the actual percent of water in it? Let's say a one or two-inch rain that would actually be stored and seeped into the ground and held?
Because we don't have.
A full two-inch rain?
We don't have good percolation because of the soil type. So it's essentially to slow down the water, treat it, and then evacuate off the site.
Okay, good. It just happens that I think there might be some money coming from our, the watershed group that I'm in. I'm hoping Daily Axe is going to have access to this grant money we just are about to give them to do exactly that, what you're talking about.
Great.
So we may be able to work together on that. So we talked to Daily Axe about, hopefully they've already heard about getting the grant. Anyway, just want to talk about that a little bit. Then on the the waivers. So if assuming we're probably gonna waive the fees, because I think most of the fees come to the city. So why would the city pay itself and cause all sorts of paperwork? So waiving them is probably the most effective thing. Is there any fees that we want to waive that are not directly city fees, but maybe schools or county? Is there any other fees? Because there was a long list of fees there.
That I'm not familiar with, maybe.
So all the, the only fee that would not be assessed by the city is the school facility fee. And that would be up to the school jurisdiction to determine if there's an exemption or a waiver for that school facility fee. All of the other fees that are either would be paid by the project or are recommended for waiver or exemption are assessed by the city.
Right. So, yeah, so why why charge ourselves if we're gonna pay ourselves with the same money? Okay, that makes sense.
Right.
Except for that one, we need to get vote on that. Okay?
Also, this project is is not the type of project that creates the need for infrastructure like new residential or commercial development through having new residents and new new employees. This is, this is actually a project that's fee-funded, that's designed to mitigate those infrastructure needs. So it's it's really the reason why we have the fees.
Good. Then I think the last question I had on the list here. And I read in the descriptions, I was a little disappointed that the solar panels were not gonna be, that nobody put in a bid or a proposal to put those in. Having been at the schools where we put them in, we got them for free basically with grants all over our parking lots and several schools just about. And they're paying huge dividends. So I'm a little disappointed there. Can you make another round, another try? Because I know we have some infrastructure for climate change actions here in California. So I'd imagine some solar panels are in there. So why isn't there grants that we can go after and basically get it for free at this point? So Patrick probably has good answers on that.
I wish I had better answers for you. I'm Patrick Carter, Assistant to the City Manager and responsible for a lot of the climate programs. Unfortunately, the grant funding has really dried out for that. PG&E is not promoting that. It's, you know, they're really, the CPUC, California Public Utilities Commission, is really trying to focus on battery energy storage to kind of mitigate we're we're actually producing more electricity during the day than most places are using, where it used to be the opposite before. So the incentive structures have kind of gone upside down on that. When we did our RFP on that, we didn't get any responsive bidders to it. So and really the time to integrate it, to make it really efficient, has kind of passed. We've kind of gone past that. It doesn't mean that we couldn't revisit in the future to do some sort of retrofit situation. I know that we're making this solar-ready. We're putting conduit down that would make it a little bit more efficient in the future if we are able to find a contractor that would do it at a price that would save us money. But in the meantime, as was put in the Q and A, as kind of our response to that, knowing that, you know, we recognize we're in a climate crisis and we recognize that that we need to do our part to reduce emissions. All city facilities that have, that we have control over are subscribed to Snow McLean Power's Evergreen Program, which is 100% renewable energy, 24/7, either solar or geothermal. This facility would be on that same tariff, so we'd have that same recognition of emissions reductions compared to PG&E. And so if we if we bid it out in the future, we would be looking for some sort of cost savings that would, and solar panel and batteries are going down as as the world is turning to those forms of of energy. It's the cheapest form of energy. So there may be a time that we revisit this in the future and are able to take advantage of the the preparations that we're doing now and hopefully get a better rate than what we'd be charged then and.
Thank you. I hope that happens. Another question? Are we good? Microphone, please. Councilmember, microphone, please.
So that the, not just, because the roof I know is gonna be solar-ready to receive that at later time, but the actual shade structures, are those also gonna be wired for solar-ready? Is that what you're saying?
I don't believe so. Yeah, I'm looking over at my colleagues. So there's a premium. I believe it's also, you know, the extra additional weight bearing to it. You have to engineer them to different standards. Yeah.
And I believe that was in the questions and answers too, that comment was in there.
That specific part I don't think was, but the earlier part.
So those structures are not gonna be strong enough to, I just want to check that, that that was what was being said there, that they're too light for solar panels. Okay, that's, that was the end of my questions.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, will you make the call for public comment on the item?
We did receive one comment ahead of time, which is posted online. And if there's anyone else who would like to make a comment, this is the moment to please bring your speaker cards to my desk. Looks like we have a couple takers.
Welcome, Paul Francis. The microphone is yours.
Thank you. So my name is Paul Francis. I live, as the crow flies, about three blocks from the site. And you know, I want to preface my comments by saying, you know, I appreciate the fact that the police and firemen, they they want and they need decent facilities to operate out of. But I do want to talk about the approval of the conditionally used permits and I want to talk about the site. I first want to start talking about the general plan designations at that site. Now, you know, we spent a lot of time developing a general plan, a lot of time, a lot of money. I think it was about $500,000 to work on the general, finalize the general plan. And this project does not meet the vision set forth by our general plan for that site. The project site straddles two use designations. The front of the site is mixed use. The back of the site is public use. We all know what mixed use, what a mixed use project looks like. And this isn't it. And once we lose our open public use at the backside of the site, it's gone forever. I also want to talk about the funding. There seems to be some confusion in the packet about the project estimates and the funding sources. I don't think that has really been made clear yet. The project is, as it stands, is estimated to cost about $70 million with an additional $23 million needed for renovations to existing structures. Now, assuming the city takes a $16 million bond loan at an estimated 3% annual interest rate over a 20-year term, the city would ultimately end up paying a total of $96 million over the lifespan of the loan. Just the annual interest payments alone would be roughly about $2 million a year. I mean, when I think about those numbers, you know that little emoji guy with the spirally eyes? That's me when I look at these numbers. And I have to, I want to say, I think there's a better use for that, some of that money. For instance, there's a major project that has been cited time and time again to mitigate traffic for every major development project in the city for the last 30 years. And this is the Rayneer Crosstown Connector. A better use of these funds would be to complete that new connector, get some traffic relief on East Washington, giving us a better idea of what that gateway corridor will look like. So we can master plan the fairgrounds correctly. So I'm urging you to vote and put this on hold until we can take a look at the Rayneer project first.
Thank you.
Thank you. Stephanie Sanchez?
Well, first of all, I feel, I just want to say that I respect all the work that so many people here have have done on this project. So I feel really awkward about speaking up at all, but since I've sat through this and tried to make myself aware of what the issues are, I just have to say, number one, I'm watching the presentation, the visual presentation. I have to say, it really made me sad, because what I see is a very large whitish-colored box that's 43,000 square feet and a few attempts to make it look like something other than that. I mean, I feel sorry for the. I mean, I feel sorry for the architects that have to work with that with, given the restrictions of the fairgrounds and, and the fact that there's security issues with the building, with the, with the police and fire facility. But, you know, I look at those images and you've got these really pretty branches that are framing the images to make the thing look good. But those trees really aren't there. They're just, they're just sort of put there to, to look, make the whole thing look palatable. And then, you know, Karen brought up the issue of traffic as it exists now, how very unsatisfactory it is. And, you know, I live a few blocks from that and I, so the, the, the explanation for, well, we're going to figure that out, you know, the fire chief and the police chief are talking about how that, that's going to be solved, but it's a mess now. And I, I'm sorry, I know I don't, I'm not an official, but I feel like this is the wrong place for this building. I think it's too big and it's in the wrong place. I would rather see it, the police station be remodeled and stay where it is. And I think jamming these facilities into that space, given all of the complications that exist now, you're just not going to be able to wave a magic wand and, and, and have this all be solved. I haven't heard convincing arguments about how that's going to happen realistically. I mean, I feel like I'm a slight expert in that I've lived in this area for 20 years and I go up and down Washington a couple times a day. And John, I think your point about the solar, I'm shocked that a building like this, that's so modern and progressive, is not, that, that solar's, solar's not incorporated in it. It's just amazing. I'm, I have a lot of other quests, of questions for you and comments, but that's, that's all I can say in three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I, I do want to appreciate you both for staying here to, to this hour to get the public comment. And it's really important that we do hear that. And I know we traded emails and conversations. But bringing that back around, that closes public comment for the evening and, and council has a variety of deliberations to make. I did want to drop in before we go too much further. I noted how many restrooms are in, I mean, I started counting and I lost count of how many restrooms are in there, but I really appreciate that they're all gender neutral, you know, individual space restrooms. And, and I do appreciate, and let me ask this in the form of a question. The, the long wall of the storage building, did that get sorted for its art potential in a condition, actually going to put into the conditions for kind of how that process will get art on it? I'm assuming that space gets art on it.
Mayor McDonald, there's, there's not a specific condition of approval related to that location. The staff report does identify potential locational opportunities for public art. I'm going to defer to our public art specialist, Melissa Amber-Crowby, regarding the particulars.
I do appreciate you being here all the way to this hour as well for the art question.
Right back at you. No, I appreciate all of you and I hope I can give a good response. Within the packet, you'll find a phased approach to this. And so the first part includes identifying a decision-making team towards the artwork within the city. We've, we've put priorities so far on that panel on the corner because it's an element that can allow us a rare opportunity that we haven't had before. Within the same area of the packet, I believe it's towards the very end for this evening's meeting in the staff report, you'll see reference to a project called Beach Comer in Edinburgh by Astrid Jaichl. And that's an example of how we could use a local manufacturer, metal manufacturer, to produce the piece and bring in a couple, a lot of different types of illustrators, paper cutters, different types of artists to apply for an RFP. It's something that could be backlit. It is an opportunity that can provide us a narrative or storytelling approach to really change the usability of the area. This is a unique opportunity for our community, but it's also a unique opportunity to create a scenic and engaging space, civic space, that makes people comfortable at police and fire stations. I know from personal experience, like it does feel intimidating and it's really great to think that we have this rare opportunity to create a space that's welcoming and inviting and eases tensions that many people are coming with presuppositions.
So my concern was not just the artistic opportunity, but the, the framing of the monolithic look of the wall in the, behind the storage building. And do, did we waive commitment to art fees and art component? So we have that to work on.
And there's, within the, within your staff report, you'll find a lot of options of how we can approach that. We were starting with an anchor project with the wall because we found that that was.
Just looking to get a reiteration of a real solid push for, for this.
Yes, it's a high priority.
Yeah.
It's been communicated to me.
Thank you.
Mayor, I had just one add. There is no fees waived and there is, the art is part of this project. And as you'll notice on that wall that you're specifically talking about, though not the priority, many elements of that wall are, it's that brick or that, that blockwork, but some of it's coarse and some of it's really flat. And a lot of areas are flat for a reason because they're more susceptible for future murals and artwork. So even though maybe not part of this project and the money spent as part of the art fee on this project, there's several areas that open up opportunities for that in the future.
Thank you. And I wanted a quick ask of costs. We were given an estimate from the public of a loan or, or a bond repayment schedule and it seemed excessive to me. I know that our existing Measure U bond was 20 million and the repayment is 30 million over 30 years, ballpark-ish. And so that would probably be about the same on this. What we borrow would cost us about 50% more over a 30-year period.
Yes, I, I think that's roughly correct. So whatever the total amount is that you're bonding, you could assume that the total interest payments would be about the same amount. So it would effectively double the total amount of the payments. That's just an unfortunate aspect of, of bonding and funding a project upfront. I mean, it would be the same as if you took a 30-year mortgage on a house. If you added up all your interest payments, your house costs double what you think the purchase price was. That's kind of the same situation that we're facing. However, I would say that bonding is a really exciting opportunity because it enables us to deliver a project like this right away so that we get the use out of it. And it also, despite the interest cost, it, it helps us avoid cost escalation, which as we know with construction can often be well in excess of inflation. So to, to, to do the project now should help us deliver this amount of square footage and this amount of a project as opposed to, you know, waiting three, four, five, 10 years and getting 5% or 6% or more annual cost escalation. So a few factors to balance on that overall.
Thank you very much. The other public comment made was regarding the blandness or of the architecture such that it's, it's not high-end architecture. I'm not sure if I'm paraphrasing correctly, but I think, I think we can say that all of us, council, staff and team wish we had more money to put into more features and more opportunity, but it's cost-driven efforts and it's important that we build the facility and, and maybe we have to sacrifice on some of our other wishes. And with that, we have, we have three particular things to talk about. One is board form. Does anybody have a strong opinion on board form, want to lead that discussion? Councilmember DeCarly?
Right, we're bringing that up right now, Mayor.
Six.
Right.
I don't have a strong preference to any particular one, but I think to some degree they all kind of clash with a lot of the modernism of the building. So I, I think it's hard to pick any one. I would say that from a functional standpoint, you know, probably whichever is smoothest is going to be the easiest to clean, keep dirt, moss, things like that out of it and keep the building looking good. But, I mean, I'm, I'm not sure any of the six, I mean, are there more than the six options that, that we've been given? Because I'm not sure that any of the six really, again, go with it.
I think, let's, let's ask for other input. Vice Mayor?
And going along with Councilmember DeCarly's, the, the smoother the lines, the easier it is to clean, let me tell you, cobwebs are not my favorite person or feature at Halloween or any other time. And I'm just saying that the staggered oak has more of a clean line to it. We, we don't want it to look like our barns. I love my barns. I love old wood, but this is a modern building. So to go along, that's the only one that's got the cleanest lines, is the staggered oak.
That's what I noticed too. But it has kind of a bored and battened look to it.
It still has character.
So a little bit, we're probably going to ask for some staff participation. And what we were shown previously was corrugated, corrugated is the word, vertical corrugation. And, and I think we pushed away from that. And so this is, I guess, the response of pushing, us pushing away from that.
I mean, I think, you know, the staggered oak heavy might look the best. I mean, I know I talked about the grain and everything catching dirt and, and everything else, but I don't know. I mean, of the choices.
And I understand we're talking about, basically it's a hypo, it's, it's not polished, but it's, it's a well-finished concrete. It's, you know, well-compacted into the form.
Well, as well as we want. We have ultimate control over this installation. So I'm David Ross, the construction manager. Through the final design with the design build entity and their design team, we will be in a design development phase following this, this phase of design, going into a lot more detail into a lot of things in the building and a lot of the design. What would be really valuable now is kind of the discussion that started there, not necessarily picking A, B, or C, but character, talking about character, talking about a modern facility and what type, what level of rustic qualities are appropriate and, you know, should we really go to a super rustic barn, old barn-like wood on a modern police facility? Or would, would it be more appropriate to have a more refined, consistent, newer wood look to the, to the board form? And that's not necessarily shown there, but that would be a great comment for us to, to, to move forward with.
But this is our final SPAR hearing.
Yes.
So we are determining.
Yeah, but, but you can describe intent.
Okay.
You don't have to pick A, B, C, or D.
Let me pass over to our planning commissioner liaison, planning commission liaison and staff and ask, was there a feel from planning commission? Was there, was there a leading candidate from planning?
The planning commission did not have samples and we asked them to bring samples to the council. So that's why we have samples tonight. Thank you.
Yeah, they asked for tangible samples.
I can speak to that. The, the samples for these are like as big as this thing, right? They're huge. You can't get samples for these.
So they saw what we saw.
These are the samples. But I just want to remind you that this is a design build project. When this is awarded to a design build contractor, there will be an architect and a builder on board. They will ultimately select the manufacturer with which, with which the final selection of the form is selected. It may not even be this manufacturer. This is one manufacturer. There are hundreds of manufacturers, right?
I don't think we're worried about the manufacturer. I think we're looking about, we're looking at the look.
The point is, I don't think you need to, honestly, I don't think you need to worry about.
I think we're a little offended that you would suggest that somebody else would design our facility. I think what you do at a SPAR is you bring in and say, this is what we propose. And we don't say that later their architect will change anything. We need to have a little ownership of this. And that's where we're trying to go.
That's what we're used to, but what the council's not used to is a design build project delivery method like this, which is absolutely critical.
Sure, we agree, but how much latitude do we leave? Should we go back to corrugated, independent?
That's the council's call, but that, that's why I think you heard the project manager saying how helpful the kind of guidance that this council was sort of roughing out can be because that can be very focused and directive and allow some flexibility. And if it's well-articulated, the council's desires can be fulfilled and the, and still the cost savings preserve that, that project delivery method.
So, does anyone want to elaborate what the style should be?
If I can finish, well, I didn't get to finish earlier.
I'm going to try and bring everybody into the conversation and then bring you back for a finish. Councilmember Shrebs?
Yeah, so I, I hear what you're saying and so the barn look trying, trying to, the very rustic feel, whatever it is, may be a little bit much for what should be, because you have the slats in the front that are modern and made of aluminum. So I see we don't want to go to, hey, it doesn't want to look like a barn. The corrugated was a little bit too much and, and that look, but something in between that has something to it, but it's going to be more vertical because of what the water run down not be caught in, in edges, because that's where things happen with the webbing and like, so everything's up and down. So an up and down, but not as much as a corrugated and not really hardwood, so it looks like a barn, but something. So I would actually give it up to the designer to take and say, with that premise, take over and get, get what you feel is best. And I'm, I'm not going to complain too much about it.
Councilmember DeCarly?
So to, to finish my statement, I think this goes back to, you know, we kind of got fluffed with, these are all images, this is all elements of Petaluma, this is what makes Petaluma Petaluma. But then we go to put a, a wood-looking siding on there, which is very common in Petaluma and all of a sudden it doesn't fit. So we, you know, this goes back to the very first meeting we had about this or that I was a part of, where it's like, this is not, this is not a look of Petaluma because now we can't even make wood look natural in the building.
And your suggestion for a resolution tonight?
I, I mean, I, I don't think the corrugated looks any better. I, I get we're working within the parameters of a tilt-up building. You know, I mean, I think it needs to be as, you know, I, I suppose we go with something that looks like wood but not harsh, you know, something that doesn't look like you just peeled the form boards off of it. Something that I guess looks as good as it can with what we've got.
You still good with staggered oak, oak heavy?
Of these options, unless there's more like the, like the architect just said, there's.
I think we, we have a million out there. We have to give an indication of the, the 100 that we'd like to get narrowed down to.
Would, would you like your design architect's opinion here?
Please.
I would recommend.
I'm sorry, give us one second, please.
I'm sorry.
Councilmember.
I'm, I'm just listening to the conversation. It was, I feel like at the last discussion, it was really heavy. We want it to look like Petaluma and wood and, and the corrugated wasn't correct. And I feel like what we have here, I don't particularly care for it that much. I actually preferred the corrugated. Or is there like a teak looks to make it a more, it's a modern building and just more of a flat teak-looking wood to make it more modern looking?
Okay.
Because it is a modern building.
Back to the architect.
Okay, I'm just giving my opinion, but I do want to give one other part. As far as between the fire and the police station, I like the differentiation of the colors because the, the red looks good with more of a grayish color versus the white color. So I think the fire department really wants red and something that goes with that.
That's, that's, it is midnight and we don't need a motion to stay going, but can I, you know, everybody try and use a few less words. I, you know, everybody try and use a few less words. Thank you. A few less words. Sell me.
Thank you. Sell you. Got it. Well, I would say this. Number one, you're staring at six images very close up of these boards. You're looking at all the fine detail. In reality, these, these board form boards are like that wide on a two-story structure. So the sort of rusticness that you're talking about will not be there. Secondly, board form concrete is a very common material in very modern buildings. Some of the most built, beautiful, most beautiful modern buildings in the world have board form concrete and have done so for the last 50 or 60 years. So there isn't anything that's unmodern about board and form concrete. In fact, it's quite the opposite. It's a very modern sort of way to treat concrete. So I agree with David, actually, in terms of sort of, if, if we're looking at these and we're going to pick one, I would say probably the, the simplest is the better. And I think probably the simplest is this old timber, the one on the bottom right-hand corner. It's kind of got the wider board, it's got simple lines, it's, the grain isn't too overwhelming. I think that is a, like a good balance between simple and-
Thank you. Did you want to weigh in?
That was incredibly validating because I was on board with the old timber. So I will throw my weight behind that and call myself an expert. And while I'm at it, I'll just thank everybody for all the great teamwork that's gone into this. And it's, I'm proud to be a part of it. I'm proud of everybody who's been a part of it. And I would say one request coming out of this is Chief Shock, the, the comments you gave me about why here and all of those things about circulation and whatnot, it would be really good to just sort of have a one-pager that lays that out that I can share very, very easily.
Thank you. Does anybody have any comment about board form? Or can we just defer that to staff as a completed item? Okay. And Councilmember Quint?
Yeah, so really quick, the, I, I do think that the board form is a big improvement over the corrugate. Like just looking at the, you know, the vertical lines, you know, the, the new version compared to the old version, I think is, is a, is a big improvement. So I just wanted to share that. And my first choice, weathered wood, second, staggered oak, third, staggered oak heavy. But then Brian kind of convinced me to go with old timber. So now that's my first. So there you go.
Do you want to have a comment on, on the board form? I think we have a split council with different, you know, like you said, 10 different eyes, sets of eyes.
Oak heavy and weathered wood. I mean, I'll, I'll make one comment about, you know, I, I went to school down in San Luis Obispo and our libraries, some of the dorms and some of the buildings, they all looked very much like a prison. They were all concrete buildings. And, and came to find out that the architect that designed them actually designed prisons. So it ended up making a lot of sense. But, you know, from the exterior, it was very similar, you know, they just peeled the form boards off and, and they were just not very warm, inviting buildings at all. So I, I think if, if the architect thinks that weathered wood is going to look the best with what we've got, then perhaps we, we leave it to her.
Okay. Moving to the wall sign, did we resolve that? Or do we have opinions on the wall sign? Do we need an opinion on the wall?
Mayor, I believe that's been resolved.
Thank you.
Sure.
And, and then also the seating and placing? I think we sorted on the seating and placing?
Well, did we ask the, is police chief, are you, are you good with that? Do you want less or more? Does it inhibit your ability to perform?
As far as the seating?
Public seating.
Yeah, no, we've worked through, we came out of planning commission and, and everything submitted tonight. We're in complete agreement between police fire and the, and the planning team.
Good. That's off the table. I'm sorry, Vice Mayor.
I just thought, if we're going to have traffic coming in off of Washington Street, is there going to be bus stops? And then they would need benches. I think that was brought up this evening about the Lumago, is that there's not always benches.
Yeah, currently, the transit drops off right in front of the Swim Center on Washington Street. So right now, I don't know that there's a current plan for a drop-off right in front of the, the facility, but I'm sure that there can be future conversations. And I think once the facility is constructed, we can have those future conversations. But for the short term, there's the, the current existing one right in front of the Swim Center. So just, you know, 100 yards away.
And thank you, chief.
So another point that was unresolved earlier was whether we like the shift to two different buildings of two different colors or one color was better. And we have an advocate for one color. And then we, I think we had an advocate for two color. And I'm just going to do this as straw poll. Would you like, hold up your hand if your two colors like shown?
Well, I don't know. Can Caitlin put the camera on me for a second?
Just keep, keep talking. It'll find you.
Don't, yeah, it will, it'll find me. Don't judge it. This is Microsoft Paint. So this is just a lot of copy and paste. But, you know, that's one color. So.
Okay. Any thoughts? Any support for that modification tonight? Go with the architect.
I appreciate the advocacy for it. I, I'm liking the, the two color, the variation. I want to support you on it, but I'm liking the variations. It's, it's, that's popping out to me.
Yeah. And I, I'll go, the red color, especially if we want that nice bright red on the doors. I think the gray color that was picked is, is matched much better than, than the lighter colors. And given the lighter walls on the other building, because of white, when you look at really dark, you're going to see the weathered patterns, but you're not going to see it on this white, whitish wall. You're not going to see that as much pattern as you do on the dark wall. But I really like the, the gray with, with the red. And, and it's got the, the brighter colors above it to kind of match, to kind of highlight it. The bands across with the wood framing in front. So I think it's a really nice design what you've got. So I'm going with what you got.
Okay. So, but we have before us two resolutions tonight. Am I correct? Two resolutions before us tonight?
That's correct, Mayor.
And so I'm looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Pardon me.
Are you asking to make a motion?
I'm asking, at this point, I'm asking for a motion.
I'll make a motion.
So we have a motion by Cater Thompson, a second by Barnacle, I think waving his hand down the end. And a roll, and any other last comment?
What is the actual motions now?
Can I get that repeated?
This would be the, the first motion would be for the conditional use permit approval for the, the land use pursuant to the fairgrounds overlay zone and also for the major telecommunications facility.
Can't they just do one motion for all the actions?
And the second motion.
If you want to do that.
Well, the, the second resolution is for SPAR. And we have a motion to do both at once and a second to do both at once. But those are the two things we're talking about here. Roll call vote, please.
Sorry, I just wanted to confirm. The motion was Cater Thompson and the second was Barnacle?
Correct.
Okay. Barnacle?
Aye.
Cater Thompson?
Yes.
DeCarle?
Yes.
Now?
Yes.
Quint?
Yes.
Shribbs?
Yes.
McDonnell?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
And want to thank staff and everybody for staying so late and doing such a, I mean, a generational project should have a generational meeting, I think, right? So, and before we, but before we adjourn, I just want to note that we're closing tonight's meeting in memory of Sean McCoy. Thank you very much. This meeting is adjourned.